I'm opening the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Do you want me to read? No, roll call.
Ms. Metoyer.
Here.
Ms. Flor.
Here.
Ms. Black. Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Barto.
Ms. Black's here.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson. Ms. Snell. Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Do we have any community input?
No ma'am.
Okay. The anticipated litigation is the International School for Science and Culture's request for district facilities. That being said, we recess into closed session. Okay. Perfect timing. Calling the meeting to order. Let me get down to where we are. Opening ceremonies. We'd like to begin with a moment of reflection and Alex will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
No move.
Second.
Mrs. Flor moved and Mrs. Black seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I had one.
Abstained? Adoption of the minutes of 1:15:19 and 1:24:19.
Move approval.
I'll second.
I didn't hear the "I'll," Mrs. Barto?
Ms. Barto.
It was moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Barto. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven oh. And now, we get to introduction of new staff. We have both Mrs. Olsen and Mrs. Jockum, so which, who was going first? Do I need to alphabet? You're going first.
I will go first, thank you. Well, good evening. Tonight it is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to introduce formally and welcome Lance Bidnick to Newport Mesa Unified School District. So I'm going to ask Lance to come on up to the podium and as he's coming up, I want to share with you that he, Lance brings with him a depth of experience that is actually quite unique and he started as a custodian, I won't say how long ago, and he has a degree in criminal justice. And he also continually takes it upon himself to continuous education through various classes that are related to his work. And that's just the foundation that he brings to this position. He has an extensive experience serving school communities at various levels and he has worked in small district, large district, county districts. And so he has, he has worked as a facility planner as well as a director of maintenance, operations, and transportation, and I could go on. He also brings with him a reputation for working well with others, problem-solving attitude, and systematically looking at any situation and bringing it to resolution. And I think in his first couple of weeks here, he had the opportunity to exercise that and demonstrate it with the reins. So I'm not sure if he brought the reins or we were just blessed to have him on board. So Lance, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the introduction. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Navarro. I'm sorry, we're.
There you go. Yeah.
And Cabinet. I just want to say, thank you very much for this opportunity. I've been in K-12 education in the maintenance and operations capacity for about 25 years, most of it working in nearby Ocean View School District, first 20 years of my career. Kind of looking at Newport Mesa as one of the prestigious school districts in the area that I could glean on for mentoring and tutelage from your staff at the time. And I looked at this district with great respect and it's an honor to be here at my career now, serving this district. And I just want to thank you all very much for the opportunity for being here.
Welcome.
Very much proud of this.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
We tend to welcome people with, you know, tasks fire, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lance, do you have a family here that you'd like to?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My wife's Jackie and my daughter, six-year-old daughter Brinkley.
Hi. Just to see who will be waiting home while you're out there doing all this stuff. Thank you so much for sharing. And now, Ms. Jockum.
Yes, I would like to ask Officer Frank Nguyen to come on down and stand at the podium. So we are pleased to welcome Frank Nguyen to our School Resource Officer position. As you know, Officer Torres went back to being a motorcycle cop. I think he almost pulled me over one day, but I managed to escape him. But we're happy that Frank is here. He has 13 years of law enforcement experience and 10 and a half of those were with Fullerton Police Department before he came over to Costa Mesa. And he was a patrol officer first before kind of applying to be the School Resource Officer. He's also an alumni of Cal State Fullerton, Go Titans, as am I. And his degree is in Criminal Justice and Psychology, which is very helpful in the position he has. And so one thing to note is that Officer Nguyen and Officer Rank were very closely together. And I've heard it kind of said throughout the district that when people see them coming, they say, here's Frank and Rank.
Right.
So that's one of their nicknames, so welcome.
Thank you. I really look forward to working with the kids and I really appreciate the opportunity to work with the district, so.
Well, at least you got some good stuff to start off with.
Yes, ma'am.
Lots of sports, good stuff.
Yes.
And he brought Officer Rank with him.
Yes.
Oh, the dynamic duo here.
There we go. I feel safer already. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
We're fully staffed.
Yes, we are fully staffed, I think. Alrighty. Student Board members reports. Alex, you may start.
So at Cronin Del Mar, although the second semester has just begun, informational meetings for our AP classes for next year are already beginning. And so this is obviously a great opportunity for students who want to learn more about each individual AP class and it's exciting to obviously think about the upcoming school year when this one's just barely halfway over. And then athletically, last night, NCSA National Recruiting Expert Paul Putnam gave a seminar at CDM and covered the most important parts of the college or collegiate athletic recruiting process, beginning from freshman year. And so I just thought that this was a really cool opportunity for our student athletes at CDM because obviously they want to pursue athletics at the next level. And then this past weekend, we had our Winter Formal at the Yoast Theater in Santa Ana. And then nearly 1,000 kids were there, so.
Wow.
Obviously, that's really cool to have such like great attendance and school spirit and it was just a great time. And then this week, we have our PAL Club hosting their Walk in My Shoes Week. And so it's really cool because it helps break down social stigmas, helps students gain perspectives of others, and then puts people in other people's shoes. And so something really cool that they do is they interview students who are well-known on campus and then students that maybe aren't so well-known on campus. And they'll just provide a really unique and interesting story and it helps you learn more about like these people and just puts a great spotlight on them. And then this week, our Youth and Government Program is heading to Sacramento for their main conference of the year. And so they actually have the opportunity, opportunity to debate in the California State Capitol. And I think it's just, I've personally done it and I think there's nothing cooler than seeing where all our state senators and legislators are and just having the opportunity to be able to work there. And then, yeah, that's all we got for you this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stuff's going on. Isaiah.
So over at Costa Mesa High School, we just had our annual Dancing with the Teachers event in our theater on Friday, which was a massive success. And our National Honors Society, which I'm president of, we're currently working to create a ceremony to honor those kids who received an unweighted GPA of 4.0 this last semester. We wanted to do something like early colleges, though theirs without a 3.5, but we'd have way too many kids if we did that. So we're going to be doing an unweighted GPA 4.0 and a big honor and so I'll keep you guys all updated on where we get with that.
Thank you.
And in terms of athletics, our cheer team, and I'm sure you all heard, killed it at Nationals, getting first place. And tonight, our boys tennis team is going to be playing against Santiago High School. And in terms of academics, just today, our AP Environmental Students, including myself and we worked on Habitat Restoration in the Back Bay Science Center, as we do every month. And today, our school hosted another high school wellness workshop focusing on self-love. And this Thursday, our ASB is going to be hosting a rally for our winter sports. And tomorrow night is the Costa Mesa Choir's Solo Night at our theater, which you guys are all very much invited to come attend. And we're going to be raising money for the Painted Turtle Organization.
Painted Turtle.
Yeah. It's camp for children with chronic illnesses.
Thank you.
Yep.
Wow. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. So, Dr. Lee Sung, Russell.
Well, we recognize our students for the academics in, at the end of the year. Do we, do we recognize those students that are unweighted? I think that's a fabulous idea of the unweighted GPA versus what, I'm not sure whether we, is how do we do it at the, at the end of the year? Is it unweighted or is it a weighted GPA that we recognize our students?
In your board policy, we recognize the top 2% of each class, but the majority of the schools have some way of recognizing their top students. They usually do it at their senior awards night or maybe their lower-level awards night as well. And so some do 4.0s, some do 3.5. It just kind of depends on where the numbers fall, as Isaiah said, but they all recognize those top students in one way or another.
So do we have the capacity to get just at least certificates to those, those individuals from the board recognizing if we, if they can get the names? Because I think that's a fabulous concept is, is those unweighted GPAs because that increases the numbers. I know that many schools across in Orange County even have, they don't have the valedictorian scholars. They're all, they recognize all students that have a 4.0 and above. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. If the, if the board were to support all of our kids who get a 4.0 unweighted, we would greatly appreciate that. I wanted to do it under National Honors Society to help promote that tenet of scholarship throughout the school to help raise awareness for, that we appreciate the kids who are doing so well in their studies.
Well, you and I and Dr. Haley can get together and figure out a way we can do this.
Absolutely. And Michelle Linfor is our director for the.
And Mrs. Linfor's, absolutely.
All right, well, I look forward to hearing from you all.
Great. Thank you, Isaiah. Raphael.
So here's a little Newport Harbor academic update. Everyone enrolled in an AP class has received their AP registration paper and most classes are finishing up their core topics before AP mock tests begin. It's stressing me out, but I'm excited to just get the test over with. A lot of our seniors are sending their mid-year transcripts this week, so we had a lot of our counselors close their doors this Monday and solely work on sending all their senior students their reports to the universities they apply to. On behalf of the senior year class, I'm really grateful that they're doing this and their hard work. An athletic update, our girls varsity soccer team and boys varsity basketball team both have CIF games today. We have been promoting all these CIF games like crazy and we're expecting a great student turnout. Two of our wrestling boys, Austin Osumi and Miguel Lacona, have placed fourth and fifth in the CIF wrestling division, which means that they qualify for the prestigious CIF Masters Tournament next week.
Oh, my goodness.
So we're all rooting for them as well. Some recent events, we had our Winter Formal about two weeks ago and it was a great success. We had many attendees and everyone who went to Knott's Berry Farm really enjoyed their time there, even though there was some small rain here and there throughout the night. We also had our senior sunrise this Monday morning and regardless of the 40, the mid-40 temperature that morning, this senior class truly enjoyed the experience.
What is that?
We all get together, we all got together on the L Street and we had donuts and we just watched this sunrise.
Sunrise.
Yeah. So we'll have the senior sunset closer towards the end of June. Some upcoming events, we will be passing around pencils this Thursday with labels on them with words of encouragement to all students to motivate everyone to keep trying their best and to keep their grades up second semester. ASB has been planning grade wards this week and last week. This outdoor rally is one of the, one most kids look forward to and we are so excited to see how many people decide to sign up to play. Signups for the games for every grade level we posted this Thursday. Some unique information I like to share is tomorrow, ASB will have tables out on campus for those interested in Valentine, Valentine Day grams, which will be delivered third period on Valentine's Day. The grams are free, but if you would like to include chocolate in your gram, it's $1. We wanted to make it accessible to everyone, which is why we have an option that is free and one that is $1. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Jennifer.
So one of our academic updates is we're getting prepared for our WASP accreditation in March 2020. Last week, focus groups started meeting during our last late start schedule. There are teachers, classified staff members, students, parents, and a district official serving on the focus groups. And some of our athletic updates is both boys and girls soccer, boys basketball, girls water polo, and individual wrestlers moved on to CIF playoffs and our spring sports are starting as well. A past event was our winter prep assembly just last Friday. The highlight of it was our staff dancing. And also our new color guard program just began and they also performed in our winter prep assembly, which is actually really nice. And then one of our upcoming events is tomorrow, some of our AP Lang students will be debating some of our teachers and administrators. Topic is moral truth versus no moral truth.
Oh.
And that's it.
Thank you. That's a tough one, debating the teachers. Good job. Wonderful job, ladies and gentlemen. Alrighty.
Mrs. Metoyer.
Mrs. Snell, I'm so sorry, I didn't see your light.
No, that's fine. So I have Lucy's report from Early College. And I think it's quite interesting that she has, good evening, President Metoyer, and it's, she's got parents, M-E-H-T-O-Y-A-Y.
A-Y. So she's got it phonetically pronounced.
Is yours that way?
Not that I know of.
Oh, no, okay. You would know.
If you twine-hired, you get A's.
Yes. No, that's.
You can pronounce it.
I compliment her for that.
Yes.
Yes. Anyway, so they just submitted, Early College High Schools just submitted their application to be considered a 2019 California Distinguished School. They hope to receive good news in receiving the award next month from the California Department of Education. They are proud that their students have been able to achieve high levels in areas of English Language Arts, mathematics, college and career readiness, graduation rate, school attendance, and positive school conditions and climate. Last week, they held their Battle of the Sexes lunchtime activities as a lead-in to their white tie affair. Winter Formal, which was held at the Costa Mesa Country Club, over half the student body and guests from other high schools attended. This week is their annual Spread the Love Week before they go on a five-day weekend break starting this Friday through next Tuesday.
Five days.
So they don't get the whole week off. It's too bad. Our PTSA, their PTSA is hosting the last of the Financial Literacy Seminars conducted by Wells Fargo Outreach Program on February 21st at 6:30. It is open to all families in the school district. They are continuing their tour of the middle schools to do their presentations for the eighth graders who may be interested in applying for the 2019-20 school years. So far, they've been at Enson, Costa Mesa Middle School. And after the president's break, they will be going to Cronin Del Mar and Teewinkle Middle Schools before the end of February. School application is available to download from the Early College website and as well as hard copies at each middle school. The early decision application deadline is March 15th with the regular application deadline set for May 3rd. Lastly, the school set an all-time high in our school-wide GPA this semester. Our school averaged a 3.29 unweighted GPA in all high school, college, and ROP classes taken. The previous was 3.23, which was achieved in both semesters last school year. Thank you.
It's not a bad average. Good job.
It's not.
Well, thank you, Lucy. We miss you. Now, Mrs. Waldo, nice to see you back. Harbor Council PTA.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Metoyer, Board members, Mr. Lee Sung, Cabinet and guests. I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of Harbor Council to give you the report. Julie Lang was not able to make the meeting tonight, so it's my honor. We have lots of good news. Our Parent Education Series, last Thursday evening, we had our fifth Parent Education Evening at CDM. The topic was supporting your child in their mental health. Miriam Henderson, an associate social worker from Hoag Hospital emphasized that suicide is preventable and introduced family members on ways that they can help youth prevent suicide. Participants gained insight and awareness into the challenges and opportunities. In addition, Angela Castellanos from Newport Mesa District discussed suicide prevention supports and interventions for students. We had approximately seven very interactive parents in attendance. And next month, March 7th, at Costa Mesa Library, we will having our next session, Helping Your Child Build Character and Setting Them Up for Success. The Costa Mesa Library, March 7th, starts at 6 o'clock. I'm very excited for this. Fourth District Reflections Art Gallery was held on January 26th announcing the awards for reflections that will go on to state. We have five first-place winners that will be going on to state. We also have four second-place and two third-place winners, but the, just the first-place winners go on to state. They are, in dance choreography, a first place went to Coco Chang of Anderson Elementary. A first place went to Grace O'Brien at Newport Harbor High. Then we have three special artists that will be going on. Visual Arts went to Angela Hernandez of Back Bay High School. Literature is Angelina Espinoza from Davis. And then Zarar Zubair from Adams also won it for film production. He'll be going on to state. He's our winner that last year went on to national.
Yeah.
So we're very excited for him to be able to present again. Five first-place winners, yes for us.
Pretty amazing.
Sacramento Safari is coming up on February 25th and 26th and we'll have three Harbor Council Executive Board members that will be going up to Sacramento and will be giving an informative report when we get back. Fourth District Administrative Dinner is being held on March 20th and everyone is welcome to come. It's a 50's theme, have to dress up. Yesterday, Julie Lang and myself presented also to the principals' meeting about our new electronic membership program. We were asking for their support in working with their PTAs and getting them on board because it's, it's a great program and it's been so successful in many places, in fact, throughout the state. California PTA now has 65,000 members signed up on electronic membership. So we know it works and they've ironed out all the kinks and we now have 10 schools that are active in it and we have three that have really been promoting their membership. So we're happy about that, but we're looking to expand our horizons with the other schools and get them signed up and on board. And it's so very simple. If you want to join a PTA, you just go to jointotem, T-O-T-E-M, dot com and put in the name of the school and it will pull up the PTA, their membership dues. It will give you an opportunity to put a credit card in or pay by PayPal. And you can sign up for your student's name if you want and their teacher so that they can delineate out the class rewards, et cetera. Some of the schools do that. So it's, it's just a great opportunity that we really believe in and see it as the future for, for membership for PTA.
How many, currently, how many schools do we have?
We have 10 that are currently enrolled for 1,234 memberships. We have a ways to go.
Can you send us the list of those, those schools?
They are.
Well, if we get the link, then we can promote it too.
Yeah, we have to, we have to, you have to type in the, I was just going to do it right.
Yeah, we're trying to.
But we can't, I can't find the, I don't know what they are.
If, if, just go to jointotem.
Yeah, but we don't know which.
T-O-T-E-M.
It doesn't show, you have to type in the name of the school.
You do have to type in the name of the school.
Yeah, so I was just asking.
So our schools that are currently active with it are California L, Enson, Estancia, Newport Beach L, Pollerino, Sonora, Newport Heights L, Mariners, Back Bay, and Davis.
Okay. Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, I have a question, I don't know, for you or somebody else. The Parent Education Series, is that recorded so that people can view it online?
We've asked.
Especially, you know, I know you didn't get a good turnout, there were a lot of things happening last Thursday night, I know that. But there are people in the community who would like to see them. Do you know if they're recorded?
I think we've been working on that. If I'm not mistaken, there were some issues there with, the speaker has to.
Agree.
Be able to give their permission to have their presentation recorded. And I'm not sure that we've made that, that progress everywhere. I know the, the speaker that we had for our second session, which was the one that was so very popular, we had like 300 people that showed up. Love and Logic, that one was, we did get permission from her to put her presentation out and I believe that was put out, or it's available. But we have to work on that, on getting, I'm not sure exactly how much progress we're making on that.
Well, any progress forward is progress, right?
That's right.
Yes, we know, we realize that that is a consideration. I think there's also the consideration of if the district is posting that information, it follows the same.
Guidelines.
Rules or guidelines, like when we post for board meeting information, so in terms of closed captioning and all of that. So we are continuing to look into it, but we know that it is a desire of the community. Anything else, Phil? Got it?
Anything else?
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you again. Alrighty. We have a report on Curriculum Embedded Assessment. Dr. Sir.
Okay. Well, while Dr. Sir's coming to set up, I want to give a brief introduction. So this presentation that Dr. Sir and Shannon and Suzanne are going to be presenting is about assessment. And assessment's one of those words that tends to draw some emotion. Typically, when we think of assessments, we think of testing as, oh my gosh, testing. It's usually a downer. But I will tell you that, you know, back many years ago, there, there was testing, but we weren't as sophisticated as we are today in terms of using assessments for the right reasons. And if assessments are used for the right reasons and it's done appropriately and it's used for learning, it is a very critical aspect of what we do as educators. And I think what you're going to see tonight is some in-depth look at some of the assessments that we have here and the rationale why. And we're very proud of the work that's been done and we're very proud to share that with the board tonight and to answer your questions on, on this word that is a good and positive thing for student learning. So with that, Dr. Sir.
Before you even start, thank you very much for getting us the PowerPoints first because then we can write on them. Thank you.
You're welcome. President Metoyer, Board members, Deputy Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet, and esteemed guests, it's really an honor to present to you the elementary education plan this evening. And with me, I have two experts in the field, our internal experts. I have to my left Suzanne Ann Halt, who is one of our Teachers on Special Assignment for English Language Arts, and to her left is Shannon Haney, who is also one of our Teachers on Special Assignment for English Language Arts. And again, it's a real honor to talk to you about all the work that's gone into an assessment plan that we're continually working on and always trying to make better. So when it comes to the current assessment plan at the elementary level, we have two content areas that we primarily are focusing on, and that's English Language Arts and Mathematics. The purpose tonight is for us to provide you a brief overview of the assessments that we're using, but to really go in-depth into one specific area in English Language Arts related to reading. So that's where we're really going to dive in deep tonight as far as the direction this is.
So, that's where we're really gonna dive in deep tonight as far as the direction this is going. So, within English Language Arts, we have the Reading Foundational Skills and the Grade Level Standards, and also within Mathematics, we have the Grade Level Standards. On the next slide, you're going to see the actual assessments that are part of the plan, but before that, we really wanted to get into, giving you a little bit of detail into describing how our plan was co-constructed. So, last year was our first year of implementing two sets of instructional materials, both the English Language Arts and Mathematics. And within that, we were able to get a lot of feedback in regards to the different assessment tools that are within the Wonders English Language Arts Program, and the different assessment tools that were available to us in the Bridges Mathematics Program. So, again, it was really a challenge for teachers to implement two different sets of instructional materials at one time, but we really wanted to have as much information as possible when we go into making decisions on what will our plan for this year look like. And one of the things I would say is that there was a real key, there's a balance that you try to find when it comes to making determinations around what's going to be part of our assessment plan. And that balance is between balancing the amount of time and resources that are needed to do the actual assessments, and still have ample time for instruction. Because, you know, some large-scale summative tests can really take a lot of time. So, we're trying to find that gentle balance between having the information that is valuable to us, and yet still not taking away from a lot of instructional time. And we do believe that this particular plan finds that balance between the amount of time that's needed, yet still providing us the information that we would like to see, and be able to utilize at the site level, at the district level, just across the board. So, these are the different assessments that are part of our plan. Under the Reading Foundational Skills, we are using an assessment tool called DIBELS Next. And then, under the Grade Level Standards for English Language Arts, we use the unit assessments that come from our new adoption, Wonders, and for K-6. And then also with the Grade Level Standards, we use another tool that really helps us, and that's STAR Reading. That's an outside measurement that really does a lot of work for us in regards to giving us information on the grade level standards. And then, within Mathematics, this year, we have two different mathematics programs. One is Bridges for K-5, and the sixth-grade one is Illustrative Math. And so, for Bridges, the Number Corner checkup, the unit tests, and the Comprehensive Growth Assessment are all part of the plan related to the Bridges set of instructional materials. And then, within what we're doing with sixth-grade, it is a year of exploring and learning, but we are working with the unit tests when it comes to the Illustrative Math Program. So, as I was saying earlier, one of the things that we really would like to do tonight is focus our deep attention into the work that we are doing at the elementary level with the Reading Foundational Skills, and specifically, the assessment of DIBELS Next. And the Reading Foundational Skills are a piece of what goes into helping us focus and address, and hopefully attain, the milestone of all students reading proficiently by the end of third grade. We know that the Reading Foundational Skills are a critical aspect of that. They aren't all parts of making that happen. The Grade Level Standards and looking at all the different types of standards that relate to supporting a student to be a proficient reader are important, but having the basic reading skills in place is a fantastic segue to move a student into mastery and proficiency with the grade level standards. So, it's an essential component, and we try to assure it so that by the end of third grade, with those basic reading skills in place, you've got that ability of learning how to read. You've got that piece in place, and now you're making that transition, starting in fourth grade, of reading to learn. So, it's that transition. We need to learn how to read in order to be able to read to learn. And that's where a lot of expository text and informational reading occur, starting in fourth grade. So, having those basics of reading is really is a critical aspect. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our elementary TOS, Shannon Haney.
All right, we just wanted to go over a little bit about what DIBELS is. I'm sure you've heard the term a lot, and it's kind of a funny sounding word, but it's actually an acronym. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. So, what that means is, it's basically a suite of measures, of assessments, that we give to students from beginning in kindergarten all the way on up. And of course, the assessments are dynamic in that they, what we give to a kindergartner is different than what we give to a third grader, of course, in the assessment process. They're also dynamic in that even the beginning, the assessments we might give in the beginning of kindergarten are different than how they look in the middle, or even at the end of kindergarten. So, we allow for that progression of reading to take place. So, the DIBELS Next assessments, these are some of the basic reading, early literacy skills that they measure up here. Phonemic Awareness is part of an umbrella term called Phonological Awareness, and that is really important for students to have in place so that they can actually, what we call decode a word or read a word. It affects their phonics and their word attack skills as well. The measures in kindergarten, when we first get those little kindergarters, the beginning of the year and in the middle of the year, those two benchmarks, we give them a measure called First Sound Fluency. So, it's where we, an assessor might say, would say a word to the students, and we want them to say the beginning sound, the first sound of the word. So, if the assessor says "man," we want the students to say "mm," right? A lot of students want to say "m," they want to, you know, they're really proud of their letter names. They know their letter names, but we really need to, we really need to know that they can actually segment the word and hear all those separate sounds. So, phonemic awareness and phonological awareness are really important for those early reading skills. Next, it also, we also assess phonics and word attack skills. So, one measure we give for this one is called Nonsense Word Fluency. And it sounds funny, because you should think, why are we putting nonsense words in front of kids? The nonsense words are things like "mip" and "dap," and they're usually consonant, vowel consonant words. And the reason why we put nonsense words in front of kids is because we don't want it to, we don't want to leave anything to chance that they're using comprehension, or that it sort of sounds like a word and they could guess. We don't want any guessing when it comes to decoding. We want to make sure that they know the code and they can break the code. Fluency is another measure we take. That's probably one of our more robust measures that we give, because it's, we start giving it the middle of first grade all the way to sixth grade as needed. And fluency is that beautiful bridge between decoding and comprehension. So, your comprehension can affect your fluency if you already know a lot about the topic, that the passage is discussing. Then you might already anticipate some of the vocabulary, some of the grammatical structures of the sentences, and things like that, that might help you out. But really, fluency is also greatly affected by, of course, phonics and your word recognition. So, with fluency, there's three major things that we look at. We look at, first of all, accuracy. If students cannot accurately decode words or read the words in a passage, then of course their comprehension will be greatly affected by that. We also look at rate, and so while we're not, we don't want students reading too fast, of course, but we also don't want them reading too slow, because you can't actually read so slow. You can be a really good decoder and have all those phonics skills down, and really know the sounds that go with the letters and all that. But if you're reading so slow that it doesn't even sound like a sentence anymore when you read it in your head, that's gonna affect your comprehension as well. So, fluency is a really good measure for us. And then, when we take that fluency measure for oral reading fluency, after the student reads for one, it's a one-minute timed assessment, after they read that passage to us, we ask them to tell us anything they know about the passage they just read, which is really important, because as we've seen, we've got kids who can read and decode and sound beautifully fluent, and then you ask them, tell me something about the passage you just read, and it has nothing to do with the passage they just read. So, we ask them to tell us some of the main ideas, tell us some details that they remember, and so we have a way we capture that as well. So, here's an example of the oral reading fluency measure. And this is not what the student sees. The student just sees the passage with the title, kinds of hats. But this is an example of what, like the kind of marks that a teacher would make. So, we're counting the words along the margin, and then when there's a slash, it means the student had a miscue or a mistake. When it says, when there's a slash with an SC, that means self-correct, which means the student, they were able to figure out, oh, wait, that wasn't the right word, and they went and self-corrected. And so, we just make that note, and that doesn't count against them when they self-correct. When there's a line through that, that means the student skipped the line. Sometimes kids do that. They read through and they skip a whole line of text, which of course disrupts comprehension. So, that's just an example, and we use the total words correct to determine the accuracy of that. Here's an example of one of our teachers. She's giving a, that's a kindergartner in that picture, and she's got, so most of the measures are one-minute timed. There's one that's three-minute timed, but notice she's sitting right across from the student. Listening, our listening as assessors is really important for this, because we want to get really accurate data. So, we have to really listen carefully to what the kids are saying and what the kinds of words that they're producing for us. Here's another example of a teacher. And notice that it's not a small group, this is a one-on-one assessment given.
How long does it take to give that test?
It depends on the grade. Each measure is about, each measure is one-minute timed. But then, there's, of course, you have to kind of send the kid back, and you have to, we have to do some calculating, and sometimes we reserve that till the end when we've assessed all the kids. So, I would say five minutes, could take longer. In the benchmark, because we take the benchmark in oral reading fluency three times a year, the students are given three passages. So, it's read a passage, that's a minute, read another passage, that's a minute, read another passage, that's a minute, and then we take the average of all those. So, they're really given a lot of opportunities to show us what they know. So, that's where it comes in, takes about five, five minutes or so.
Is this all done with a teacher, or can an aide do some of these?
Yes, yeah, anybody who's trained. So, Suzanne and I and our colleagues are all trained to be DIBELS Next mentors, which means we're trained by the company to train others. And, yeah, we, if anybody works on our campus and they're trained in it, we actually, they're all highly trained though, and we don't have anybody that administers the assessment without being trained, so that it's of course universal.
Okay, thank you. So, these are the results from our first benchmark of the year, which happens right in the beginning of the year. We, for our assessment schedule, does call for three times per year, so this is our first pass. And when it comes to kindergarten through second grade, all students are assessed. So, when you see these results, we actually have 4,063 results total, and we have 4,100 students in K-2. So, that is a very comprehensive set of data in regards to knowing where our students are with the Reading Foundational Skills. And to have that amount of assessment data available to us, to really say, you know what, this is reflective of all of our students in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, it takes a lot of work, and a lot of credit is due to a number of different departments, a number of different people, and a number of different systems. When you think about each of the school sites, MTSS on the academic side is something that we've put a lot of attention to over the years in regards to this area with the Reading Foundational Skills. And there is a lot of attention that goes into working specifically with the next piece you're going to hear about, which is the SIPs resource. But also, when it comes to all of this work, we have to be mindful of the fact that principals have their hands very deeply into creating systems of intervention and support for the Reading Foundational Skills. The training that we've talked about, Kathleen Leary, our Director of Preschool and Early Childhood, she has done an amazing job of putting together the training. Vanessa Galey as well, with her connections at the Orange County Department of Ed, and the amazing work that she's doing with all of our teachers on special assignment. It's really focused around these aspects of creating systems in a school so that we can help support and provide the intervention that really is needed. So, we're hovering at about 70% in regards to our K-2 students being at benchmark for our first measurement. Again, we're gonna do that two more times this year as far as all students. And we're at about 11% in regards to students that are below benchmark, and 19% with students who are well below benchmark. And you may be wondering, what are we going, what are we doing to address the results of seeing students who are below benchmark and below benchmark? And we do have a set of instructional materials called SIPs. And Suzanne Ann Halt is here tonight to talk to you about what SIPs is and how we're using it in Newport Mesa.
Dr. Sir, and just because we have the 2,821 students that are at or above benchmark, don't not ever get tested again, correct? We keep progress monitoring them to make sure that they don't drop below, correct?
That's correct. We do it at a minimum three times per year, as far as the DIBELS Next benchmarking.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Below benchmark, well below benchmark, is that a year behind, or is there any, what's the framework of that? I mean, what's the difference, below, well below?
So, it really depends on the grade level of a student, so they hit certain benchmarks. It's truly just an indicator of them meeting their next benchmark and reading success. So, there are different benchmarks for like a beginning, a middle, and an end for each one of the grade levels, and they're not consistent throughout the year. They do change, and they actually get higher as the year progresses. So, again, we're working on a trajectory of building student understanding of foundational skills, and so their benchmark goal is going to get higher. So, there are goals for our students who are in the green. There's goals for if a student hits a certain level, that's what indicates that they're in the yellow. And then if they hit a certain percentage, then that's when they're in the red. So, the color coding kind of helps us to easily visually see who's in need of extra support. And so, to answer your question specifically, there is a whole list of numbers that we have that guides this conversation.
Okay, so if I'm a parent and my child is below benchmark, how far behind are they? I'm not, it's just, you know.
Away, or are you?
Are they one question, yeah.
A year away, right.
Yeah, or are you saying it's not measuring that? It's measuring where they're supposed to be in that, in all these different areas?
Right, so it's measuring their progress throughout the year, beginning, middle, and end. So, clearly, like what would a well below benchmark child be? They would really be, I would say, a couple.
Well, I would say honestly, it's because DIBELS is an indicator of future reading success. It's not giving us data on like the lesson we taught that day. It's just a kind of a predictor of like future reading success. So, below benchmark means that they fall within the strategic range. So, it lets us know as educators, okay, this kid's in the yellow, they're in a str, we need to come up with a strategy. We need to be strategic about what we're doing to help them, because the core program, so the green means the core program is just fine for these students. Yellow is strategic, and then red is intensive, which means that student, when they fall into the MTSS, we really need to be really, they need more intensive work. So, it's really, it's, this isn't really standards necessarily. It's more based on the reading progression and just the skills that students are acquiring as they go through the different read levels.
Okay.
So, Vicki, another piece to that, it's a really good question. Another aspect to that was when you think about DIBELS Next compared to STAR Reading. STAR Reading is something that starts in third grade. That gives you a grade level equivalency.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
It gives you an instructional reading level. And when we're looking at DIBELS Next, it's about what skill sets, what skills are in place for a child. So, something that is kind of a dance, if you will, is we look at the DIBELS Next results. We look, we look at what resource are we using, and that's where we're gonna go into SIPs tonight. And we can make placement decisions for where within the beginning portion of SIPs, the extension, and the challenge portion of SIPs, does this child place into, given where they're at with their current skill sets. So, it's about placement in those early grades to move them through the progressions of being able to master the Reading Foundational Skills.
And it's about picking out exactly where they're deficient, or where they're having problems. Okay.
It's a developmental progression.
Exactly.
There isn't a grade level equivalency.
Okay, got it.
Would you decompose MTSS for those people that don't know what it is?
Yes, it's a multi-tiered system of support. A lot of people, you know, would hear RTI, Response to Intervention. That is the academic portion of what now is termed as MTSS. When you think of an umbrella, the multi-tiered systems of support is both academic and behavioral. And Dr. Jockham is very happy that we now have switched to that terminology. No, it covers the academics and the behavior. It's a multi-tiered system of support.
Okay.
Now you can say MTSS all you want.
So, an example of a kindergartner who would be well below benchmark would be, they don't know their letter sounds at all, is that kind of the way to look at it?
Right, so it could indicate a need in actually just even letter naming, concepts of prints, really beginning at that developmental stage, and then not knowing their sounds. So, we're looking at sounds, at their initial sounds, we're also looking for middle blends. And then we're also, as they progress through, eventually leaning into nonsense words. So, that is true, that they're not knowing their sounds at this particular point in their development.
Have you guys seen a difference from last year, since this is from this fall, with the new curriculum for first and second graders? with the new curriculum for first and second graders? Have you seen, like, what were the numbers for last year estimate?
We would be happy to get all, we have those George Knights and his assessment department. We can look back at Dibbels because it's been in our district for a very long time. We can look back to last year, the year before, and the year before, and we'd be happy to provide that information to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So how do we ensure systematic phonics instruction for our students who need it? So research consistently indicates that phonics instruction is essential for student reading success. So the tool that, one of the tools that we use here in the district is called SIPs. I have another acronym for you. So SIP stands for systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words. It is a program that was designed by Dr. Schuffelbein from Sac State. And I think that what is really special about this program is that it's a teacher resource as well as a curriculum. So it actually teaches the teacher about the construction of the English language. And it also provides curriculum so teachers can be successful in their instructional routines daily. So when you think about decoding, you're really thinking about two parts. You're thinking about word recognition and you're thinking about fluency. So we're talking about word recognition, we're looking at such things as phonological awareness. Phonological awareness is the ability to hear sounds and segment them. So we call this what, phonics that you could do in the dark. It's sounds that students are able to do without print. For example, if I said the word sat, the student would be able to say s-at right back to me without any print support. And that's the beginning stage of really helping students to segment and identify sounds. Then we go into phonics instruction where now we bring print into the picture. So now we put the word sat in front of them, and now the student sounds it out and segments it with s-at. Then we work on our sight words. Sight words are just words that students need to know automatically for reading fluency. It could be a word that is not decodable, or it could just be a high-frequency word that they're going to encounter often. These are words like walk or said that they might find in text. And then we work with the morphemic transformations. And this is really what helps kids access that 10,000 new words that they're going to encounter every year that they start to progress through their education. This is where we take a word like produce and make it product and production. This is where we take happy and make it unhappy and turn it into happiness. So they're really transforming those words. And if you think about how much the English language has suffixes and prefixes, how many morphemic transformations, they're really going to need that to access their textbooks, as well as just reading for pleasure as well. And then there's a guided spelling component. And this is where we take all the work that we've been doing in that lesson and we apply it to encoding, which is our spelling component. We listen and sound out with teacher guidance the words that we're hearing on a spelling list. And every student will be successful because it's guided by the teacher. This is really helping students to use their resources around them. There's wall cards behind them that has all of the individual sounds behind them that they can utilize as well, so they can be independent spellers. And then finally, there's fluency, and this is really where the magic happens. We put everything together, and the students are reading decodables and eventually trade books, applying all the skills they've learned in a lesson.
What's a trade book?
A trade book can be a chapter book, any book that brings the student interest. So that could be Toad and Frog, which is a favorite second grade book. So we need to make sure we're checking on student progress to make sure that they are gaining the skills that they need. What is built into the program is called mastery test or also progress monitoring, depending on the level that the student is in. What we're looking for is a phonics, and it's just a real quick check-in. And then we also look at their sight words that they learned in the particular lessons. Depending on your level, this could happen every five lessons or 10 lessons. Where we're really making sure that students are reaching an 80% mastery of a particular topic and subject in their phonics work. And then there's also an implementation guide that the teacher can use to help them to interpret their assessment, because assessment is always going to guide instruction.
So do the kids see, when they're taking this progress test, I mean, it's, again, it's individual, correct?
Correct, it's one-on-one.
And so do the kids see their, their results? Or so that they can, they're giving, they're given the test. I'm assuming their flashcards or some sort of, do they get to, do you talk to them about their, their results?
Absolutely. I think it's really important for students to be coached. And this is such a great opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with students about what they're really doing well. And then things that we can still do to build their reading fluency. So you might be like, friend, you are so close, but just press some more practice with a few of these sight words, and you are going to be reading your favorite book soon. And just really building their confidence as readers. And we also just have some tools that we can do for quick little coaching sessions, some distributed practice along the day, meaning we're practicing one topic many times for a very short period of time. And that helps students to be successful as well. So here's instruction happening with SIPs. It is usually in a small group format, usually around five or six students. They've been placed very thoughtfully by placement test into their groups. And then we're mastery testing them along the way. We often mastery test them a little bit ahead of, well, the topics or the lessons we haven't even taught, to make sure that we're putting them in the right level, because we know students grow so quickly. And so there's a frequent check-in and progress with how the students are doing in this program. It is teacher-directed, it's choral responses that the students are doing, and there are very clear components. So we're going to do some phonological awareness, then we're going to do phonics, then we're going to do some guided spelling, and then we're going to do our fluency work. And this is a structure that's really consistent throughout the program. And our goal with this program is, I know, isn't she? Is that we don't want students to be great SIP students, that's not the goal. We really want them to become proficient readers. And so we know that those decoding skills is really crucial for them to our reading success. And if we really think about this, we're not sure what they're going to want to be when they grow up. And so we want to make sure they have the tools they need to read a technical manual, to read a military manual, to pursue their postgraduate work. And we know for them to really pursue their dreams, they need to become readers and proficient readers. And it's such an honor and a privilege just to see them grow and learn from K all the way up to six, and as they go through middle school and high school and pursue their dreams.
So we know we jumped into the reading foundational skills tonight, but we do look forward to future meetings and being able to provide to you and for more detailed information in regards to the grade level standards for English Language Arts and mathematics and other content areas as well. Because we know that, you know, we have a comprehensive curriculum, and these are just two critical components of that. We would be remiss if we didn't thank you for the resources that you provide out to our schools and the guidance, because there really is a lot of hands on deck, if you will, when it comes to creating systems in 22 elementary schools. And definitely, the, the work that we're doing with MTSS on the academic side of the house, with Dibbels Next, and with SIPs, and with Wonders, is something that takes a lot of time and effort, but it's time well spent. And we really appreciate all of the ability for us to be able to do that. We know it's, a lot of decisions need to be made in the budgeting, but this is one area that is, is definitely worth investing in, because there's a lot of research that speaks to the importance of students being able to read by the end of third grade. And again, I just want to recognize not only Suzanne Anhalt and Shannon Haney, but Vanessa Galey and all of the TOSAs who are working, spending a lot of time in our Title I schools and helping support our students that really do need this, this ability to be competent and proficient in their reading by the end of third grade. And there's a lot of time and effort that's going into that. So, thank you, and we're very happy to answer any of your questions.
Ms. Anderson, did you take it down?
Oh no, it's up, yeah.
Okay, good, you were up first.
Your presentation's wonderful. This is something close to my heart, being a former kindergarten teacher. Are there any areas that you still feel like you need? I feel like SIPs is something that a teacher has to work one-on-one with a small group. And in a lot of the classrooms, especially in the West Side, there's not a lot of volunteers necessarily. Is that, do you still need more resources to do this really well? Is there, what can we help you with? Is there any, do you feel like you have enough? I guess my question is, do you feel like you have enough support? Or is there more support that you still need?
We have fairly robust RTI systems at the sites that we work at. And I probably, we've been up to our principals to answer that question more specifically. But I think training is always great. We recently had a SIPs training, and we, of course, we initially rolled out SIPs and we trained everybody initial, initially in the program. And we've been, since it's come into our district, we've been kind of refining our practice with it, because we know there's so many nuances to teaching, to teaching at the program. And so we just had a training last Monday with 50 people, 50 teachers, from classroom teachers, SAI teachers, instructional aides, RTI teachers, everybody. It was just a mix of people from all over the district came and they worked in small groups and they refined their practice. So I think ongoing training is always good for everybody.
Yeah, something that really comes to my mind as far as some recent changes that have occurred to help address getting lower class size is with your support and the work from Jeff Trader and Jeff Trader's department and with Vanessa Galey, we have really been able to increase the amount of hourly support teachers in our schools. And that makes a really big difference. I'll give you one shining example of just a, a very practical way of looking at this. Dana, let's say you and I are on a second grade team at a school, and we have three or four instructional support teachers that are going to support us. There'll be a time during the day on a routine basis when we'll have two, three people come in. And so, and let's say we have a class of 22. We'll have three more people come in to reduce our class size and provide that small group instruction that we know is a really critical aspect to teaching the reading foundational skills. So we've been able to move class size, reduce class size numbers when we're doing this intervention. And that makes a really big difference, and it allows for the differentiation that's so critical. Becomes, because some students have those reading foundational skill sets in place and they need enrichment. Whereas we know we have students that need that intervention and with having the ability to bring in additional people to our team, it really makes a, a big difference to be able to personalize that learning and get to know the students better and to make a bigger impact on moving them forward with their reading progression.
And it's, they're delivered by employees, correct? I mean, they're teachers, teachers do the SIPs. Teachers do SIPs. Mrs. Snell?
Yeah, well, on that same note, yeah, the West Side schools, we, with Title I funds and all the additional funding we have put into that side of, to West Side, we have a lot more support people that, that can help with SIPs.
But there's always room for more. And so that's why I'm asking, because I've been on a lot of those campuses, day in and day out. And so what I'm seeing is there is a need for a little bit more, so that's what I'm asking.
It's just you were talking about, they don't have as much, many volunteers, but they have a lot more support people.
That's one part of what I said, yes.
But what I was going to say is, I've seen SIPs a lot. And what really impresses me, other than the fact that that's the way I learned how to read, was sounding things out, is how engaged the kids are in SIPs. It's so fun. It seems so fun for them. I mean, because they're constantly giving feedback, they're not just sitting there. They're in a group setting. So it's great, that it's a great way to teach reading and to help the kids.
Mrs. Black?
Great presentation.
I, I just wanted to actually reiterate my, you know, appreciation for, I know we have to go into small groups and then sometimes one-on-one with students. But I appreciate the fact that we are encouraging them, you know, instead of saying, you know, you're going to that group, the red group. You know, my son missed the blue. So I've seen a tremendous difference in the classroom. I mean, kids just don't know. They just know they're encouraged, they keep trying and practicing. And so I've been using it on my grandsons. And we read the last chapter over the weekend of Black Beauty. And, and that's my second grader and my fourth grader. And, and they said, Grandma, you're so much better after practicing. Because I keep telling them, if you keep practicing, and they go, Grandma, you really did a great job, but anyway. So I appreciate, you know, everyone doing that. Because I have, I've witnessed it in the classroom too, and I just, I think it's, you know, helps them with their confidence. Thank you for that.
Mrs. Flora?
Yeah, thank you again. I mean, it's, it is heartwarming to walk into classrooms and see the level of activity that's going on when you have five adults with five different groups and every single one is engaged. And it provides that support. I do have a couple of questions. One is for those students in fourth, fifth, and sixth that are not even at grade level, how do you adjust the materials or are the materials at those higher levels? Kids don't necessarily want to read the cat and, you know, and toad, you know, and frog at fifth and sixth grade level, but that's where they are. So how, how does, how does that work out? What, do you use the same materials, but they're actually, through the vendor, they're actually leveled up to their interests? I mean.
Do you want to take this? Yeah, that's such a great question. So there is a level, sorry, thank you for the reminder. So there is a level that addresses that specific learner, and it's called SIPs Plus. And it is early foundational skills for an older learner. It's really designed for students who are in fourth through 12th grade, or even adult learners who are maybe learning the language. And it really helps them to go back into those original foundational skills and build up. So it's going to be a little faster paced, and it also will have a different decodable book. The book looks like a chapter book for those particular students. But it hits every single one of the foundational skills that you would find in an earlier kit for kindergarten and first grade. So it is a really nice effective program. Our placement tests will really clearly indicate for our students who have that need, and then we can put them in a group accordingly.
And those, those groupings are fluid, correct? I mean, once the, once the student has, you know, has mastered the decoding of whatever, they, they move on to a different group based on their assessment? So is that how they get out of the program?
Right, so it is, we flex a lot based on student progress. And as I was mentioning before, a student can actually make progress without us teaching them, you know? And so we'll often progress one of them ahead of the lessons just to see where their point is. And often we'll find that students have had a lot of growth without even the direct instruction, and then we can flex them into a new group. So there's lots of conversations that are happening between the intervention team, the classroom teachers, as well as the TOSAs. Everybody's coming in to support these students and really thinking and being thoughtful about where the students are and placing them accordingly.
And then, of course, we always also worry about those high-end kids. And I've got one right now that I'm dealing with, my granddaughter who, they're doing fluency, and guess what they get to do? They bring home a piece of paper. Read this sentence five times. Hello? That's not. And she's already reading at the fifth grade level, it's like, give me a break. But what do you do with, with the kids that, that 80% that is right there, but are even, they're not at grade level, they're above grade level? How do you, how do you help maintain their, their trajectory? What is, what is done through the SIPs? Is, is SIPs also, I mean, I'm assuming that SIPs is also applied to them, but do they, do they, can they move on also into third, if they're in second grade? Can they move to the third grade or the fourth grade? So that they're, they're, they're receiving support as well and interventions as well to, to maintain that?
So the thing I appreciate so much about the SIPs program is a developmental reading program. So it's really not about your grade level, it's about where you are in your progression as reading. So if you have a first grade student who's indicating a need for third grade foundational skills, we can meet that need for them. If they've exited out of SIPs, meaning that they're not indicating a need for it, we can put them into a level called challenge, which is really about working with words for experience, not mastery. Nobody can master every single word in the English language, but they have lots of opportunities to interact with Greek and Latin roots. Also, those prefixes and those affixes, all the things that are going to really help them in their high school and college careers as they progress forward.
And my final question, and I'm sorry to be really, really.
Just saying.
What do you do, how are you communicating this to the parents in terms of what can they support? I mean, we have a lot of, you know, at Whittier and some of our schools, we have parent resource centers, we have family programs, we have the PK program. We have lots of programs of how to, how to keep parents engaged and how they can help their student at home. Because many of these students don't have the books, for example, and the exposure to literature and to that. What is done in terms of communicating on how they help their students at home?
So often the stories, the decodables that we were talking about, where they're really practicing all the skills they learned in that lesson, are going home with the students. And then the parents have an opportunity to read with the students multiple times. We encourage the students to read to older brothers and sisters, younger brothers and sisters, to your dad. sisters, to your dog, as many practices that we can get in as possible. And those stories are going home the whole entire year for the students to practice. Once they're out of those decodables, then we are sending books home as well with students, either that is from the classroom library or the school library, and encouraging students to read with their families. That's such a special time and a magical time in a student's life, to really take advantage of that, whether it's in the home language or whether it's in the language of the text that's coming home, to really celebrate reading in the home and making sure we're sending books home with students to do that.
Mrs. Bartow gets to talk first.
I have one question. Thank you. The presentation was great and my students have benefited from SIPs and DIBELS and STAR. And I really see the value in all those three programs. What I wanted to know is how this interfaces and works with LLI, which I know is in use at a couple of school sites. How does that, how does, how do these play together, I guess?
Okay. I feel like I'm hogging the microphone here. So LLI is a reading program that addresses comprehension for students. It is an intervention program. So it is a guided reading program that addresses comprehension skills for students. There also is a phonics component into it and a writing component. So for our students in general that have tested or not shown a need for phonics skills, at some sites, there's availability of LLI.
Meaning, LLI is?
LLI is a Level Library and Intervention Program. Sorry, another acronym there.
Sorry, I did the acronym this time.
I know. And so it is a, just a guiding reading program that helps students to get into grade level text. It is a small group. You set goals for students based on the text. And then you have a very thoughtful strategy process that you're working through for students to achieve their goals.
And do you use that with SIPs Plus or is it that separately or?
So that's our tool to address comprehension.
Got it. Okay.
So SIPs Plus is really addressing foundational skills or all the SIPs components are addressing foundational skills.
Thank you.
Before we get to you, Mrs. Black, I just want to say, and that would lead to a natural progression into STAR reading, because STAR reading is comprehension.
Right.
Okay. Mrs. Black?
Yeah, I was just thinking about Ashley's question too. So is our goal to train every teacher and support, you know, our aides and stuff at every school at some point? Or, I mean, how are we going to have enough, because kids are all different every year, you know, and every grade level they'll be different. So, so how are we going to ensure that every, you know, student has access to this kind of support at every school, at every school?
That's a really good question. We've started by focusing our attention most heavily on the schools that have the greatest need. But it's part of our conversations right now in regards to how can we cover comprehensively the training, not just in the reading foundational skills, but in all of the different standards that students need and support with. So it is about having understanding of how do I use the SIPs resources? How do I use the Wonders resources? And we're developing that. But there was some very deliberate thought that went into the teachers on special assignment at the elementary level, working with our schools that have the greatest need. But, you know, that we are starting to hear, we would like some of that additional support over at the other school sites. And those are our discussions right now. So it's a very timely question.
Okay, great. Well, we have expanded from last year to this year in that we have at least one reading intervention teacher or intervention teacher at every school. We have at least one. And then the schools with higher need, thanks to our Title I and Title Other Number resources, we're able to increase based on needs. So we're moving in the right direction. We just.
Yeah, the, the other thing I thought, but I'll, I'll be thinking about this all night. So I'll be calling you or emailing you. As far as secondary, because we know we have children that arrive that, you know, aren't, English isn't their primary language when they arrive in the secondary or, you know, four, five, six, or in, in the junior high, high school. Do we use DIBELS at the high school level or, you know?
How do we determine what, that's the.
I mean, what's their intervention? Or we haven't got there yet?
I know, I know one piece that Secondary has been working on is implementing READ 180. And I'm sure we'd be happy to come back to you and, and talk about some of the work that's happening with READ 180.
Because I know that once they get there, you know, and we've had, you know, countless conversations about it. So, you know, when, and also, you know, the community colleges are looking at where they're going to next year do a way, you know, with, what do you call it, Math 99 and 100, they're no longer going to offer, or they're not allowed to offer it. So we're going to have to really be on our due diligence to make sure, you know, that if they missed it over the last years and were promoted, we need to make sure that we have something in place.
Yeah. And I just want to comment that even at the middle school and high school level.
Right.
We also provide supplemental funding for exactly this purpose. We have nineteen point five certificated hourly teachers at some of our middle schools, as well as in reading intervention classes and some math intervention classes. So we're having to do the same thing, you know, at, at all of our schools. And even Corona Del Mar has had to add some intervention classes because there are struggling kids at all of our schools that we need to provide support for.
Project-based learning, guys. I'm telling you, I'm a big fan.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Very thorough and heartening to know how on top of our kids that we are and that while there may be a little tiny yellow and a little tinier, a little bigger red, we, we know who they are and we know what they need and we're working on it.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job.
Mr. Lee Sung, in, in, in absence of Dr. Navarro, do we have any informational items?
We do, we do.
Oh, boy.
If, if I can have the, the student reps just stay for one more minute, I want you to hear this next item, okay?
Sorry.
Thought you could get away, huh?
You were gonna get sleep. Oh, well.
Okay. First, first of all, Dr. Navarro is a bit under the weather. He tried to make it as long as he could today, but needed to go home and get some rest. And, and as many of us are, I don't know.
We don't want to get sick.
We're freezing.
You know, we've all been struggling with this. Everyone, please take care of yourself. I've had, I had round three last week.
Oh, geez.
And I'm actually feeling better, but have a little after effects of it. But so everyone, please take care of your health. But I do want to have, share a couple of informational items. The first one with our students here. We, we know that we did a, our first thought exchange a few months ago on school-related teen stress. In fact, Raphael, you were our starter, invite people to participate. I think I shared this data before, but I want to share it again. We had almost four hundred participants in this first thought exchange. We had almost five thousand people comment and rank the, the thoughts and the ideas that were being shared. I just want everybody to know that we are in the process of having deeper discussions on this data. And that's the whole idea of this. This isn't an end-all. We, we do this and it's done, or we do this and we post it. It, it prompts further discussion. And our student leaders, as I said publicly to the board, we are going to have a deep discussion. We're going to share the data with you and we're going to give you an opportunity to comment on it, to validate, to disagree, to go deeper on some of the comments that are being shared. And Dr. DiAgostino, Dr. Baumeister, and I recruited two of our principals, the principal from Enson, Mike Shaka, and principal from Costa Mesa High School, Jake Haley, will be assisting in these dialogues. Okay? So the student group will be one. We will have another one with our parent leaders, with Harbor Council PTA, with our parent advisory, with our employee advisories, and eventually at all of our schools. Because it's so important that we use this student voice, this tool that we have, to express student voice on what they're experiencing. And then, there's three words, three words that we've been emphasizing. The first one is awareness. That really is the first level, just to be aware of how our students are being impacted with all the things that are going on in their life that, that may be causing stress. Number two is building empathy. It's not just awareness, but really truly building empathy for what our students are going through today. And the third thing is turning that into some action. And when we talk about action, it really is not what they can do or what that group needs to change or do to make this, this problem be solved. It really is what we can do. So we're going to challenge our student leaders. What can you do as students to help yourself and help others, your classmates? What can staff do that we have control over that can help in this area? And the same thing to parents. It's not about what they should do, it's about what we all can do to contribute towards this. And so we think the data is rich. We think the voice is, is very insightful. And we're going to have these discussions. And like I promised the board, I will be up here. I will share that with you and we will, but we need to.
Sooner than later, please.
Sooner than later. Okay. And we want to have this.
I mean, do we get to be sharing?
Absolutely.
We be, eventually.
And the board. How's that? Okay. But, but we are in the process of doing that and just want to assure you. Okay?
That's great. And, you know, Russell, I think it's important too that we charge our, our student leaders and our student, our student board members to go back and encourage your colleagues and your classmates to, when the next one goes out, is that we double the number of participants, to double the students' voice. So that each one of you tell one friend and ask every single one of those friends to tell one, so that we have even greater number of voices.
Participation.
Because we have, in the, at the high school level, there's over six thousand, I think, wait, what, we have six thousand?
Students?
Seven through 12th grade. Just encourage your, encourage your colleagues to participate and make, you know, if they don't want to make, they can make a comment. They don't have to necessarily post anything, but they can comment on something that's already been posted.
Absolutely.
The nice thing is, for me, if I think what I said is heard, then I'm likely to say something again. But if I think that it was like, yeah, okay, you didn't really care, never mind. I've got other things to do. Text my friends. So, thank you. That was important. We wanted you to hear that. Can they go now?
Yes.
You can go now.
You are free to go. Thank you for staying.
I think he's got. Any more good information?
I do. I'll wait for the superintendent's report.
Okay, perfect. Community input, Mrs. Flor, or Mrs. Black?
Okay.
We, we have no, we have no.
We have no community input.
Community for, for action items. No community input for action items.
Okay. So you don't need me to read this then?
Then you don't.
Or should I read this anyway? Okay.
I don't think we need to read.
Wait. Nope. Okay. Moving along. Superintendent's report, Mr. Lee Sung.
All right. So a couple of things to share. First of all, I do want to expand a little bit on what we heard from Lucy, the, the student board rep from Early College High School. We do want to acknowledge the work of Early College High School who are eligible. They're eligible for a distinguished school award for the state of California. We're very proud of them. I want to give a little background in terms of, of why that occurred. Okay, obviously, it's a good thing.
It is.
So kudos to Principal Martinez, kudos to the staff and the students who got the school to this place where they're eligible. And there's actually two ways that a school can qualify to be eligible. The first one is just student achievement. If they, over the last two years, reached either the blue or green level, remember, there's five colors, blue, green, yellow.
Orange.
Orange and red. Okay, if they're on the, either the blue or green in all of their categories in ELA and math, and they are blue and green in all of the other categories such as participation rate, graduation rate, suspension, all of the things, then they can be eligible. The other way is by growth. In other words, closing the achievement gap. And so that's from one year to the next, and they have to do that in all subgroups. So there's two ways. I'm not sure which way, Early College, they could have done it in both, okay, for, for the, the good work that they do. So we are supporting them through their application process and we hope to come back and tell you that they are officially a California distinguished school.
Excellent. Well done.
All right. And then one other thing, something that was very exciting for me, I believe this was last week, I had my first visit to the Orange County Music and Dance.
Oh, fabulous.
And they, we had our Arts Commission meeting there. And to walk into this fabulous building and be greeted by a Steinway piano and light fixtures that were made out of brass instruments was my kind of place.
Cool.
And the, the building is amazing, but what was even more amazing was the number of arts supporters that we have in our district and in our community and on our board to come together and talk about arts. And it was, it was a great opportunity to hear, to share, to see the partnerships. And, and I was there to convey the all, OCE All Kids Project. But, you know, I was literally preaching to the choir on, on that topic. But, but what a great example of the fact that our community, our district, our board, and our educators here really support the arts and really focus on a well-rounded child.
And they have a, they have a snack bar area that is open to the public and it supports students, they have, they train students to work there from an outreach program. So not only do you get organic and locally grown produces and wonderful food.
Fabulous food.
Delicious food. It's also helping students in that too. So it's, it's a great place and a wonderful partner that we have. I'm glad you brought that up. Moving on? Okay. Consent calendar.
Now you get to read.
Now you get to read. All items listed under the consent calendar considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and the superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to, to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar.
I just had one question on seventeen A seven. A seven.
A seven, okay.
Agreement with PIN or construction?
I just wanted to confirm, is that the construction firm we used last year too? As the construction manager?
No, it's not. This is a different firm.
Okay.
Did you have more?
I just, I'm, I didn't get to see this one earlier, so I just had a couple of questions. Did we, did the ones that did it last summer reapply? And we decided to go with this one or?
Yes. I think of a little bit of background to this. Before last summer's projects, the facilities department put out a request for qualifications to, for construction managers as a large group. And through that group, they narrowed it down to a smaller group and then interviewed that group and selected the firm that managed them this last summer. The firm did a fine job. We got through the project. But staff in retrospect thought it was time to consider some of the other firms that had submitted in the previous round. So out of the three most highly ranked firms from the original round, they asked for new qualifications and proposals, re-interviewed all three of those firms, and then came to believe that this firm would do the best job for us this summer.
So you're basically building a stable.
Sure.
Of, of potential firms.
The, the, yeah. I, I'd rather look at it as our staff is looking to find the best qualified people for the right projects at the right time.
Right person on the right seat on the bus.
So that's rather than, we used to use McCarthy for all this. So is this, rather than using one organization for everything, we're, we're having ones for certain.
I'm aware, I've been here for a little over two years now, I'm aware that that particular firm was here at the district for many, many, many years and, and was continually the firm that was used for all projects. Staff has really been looking at who can provide the best project management.
Good.
For the specific projects that we have. And this time they decided that it was a good idea to look again and chose a different firm.
Good.
For the summer's project.
Mrs. Flor?
I just have a que, I just have a question and I thought it was curious that we are approving.
What number?
Seventeen A eight, the ship's anchor displayed at Newport Harbor High School has been on loan. I had no idea that it was on loan to the Newport.
And is treated like a loan.
Newport Mesa Unified School District from the Naval History and Heritage Command Curator Branch in Washington DC Naval Yard. And I went, who knew? Who knew which, I mean, the big anchor outside?
That is, that's exactly right. The, the really big anchor that has a chain around it, that's chained to the column so that you don't take it anywhere, Mrs. Flor.
Like over to.
Yeah, like I, all that off.
Your Girl Scouts might need it.
Yes, yes, that. Yes, that big anchor is from a ship called the USS Tortuga. That ship, that was the second USS Tortuga. And it was decommissioned. And back in 1999, a member of the student body of Newport Harbor High School wrote a letter to this agency in Washington, DC, and said, "We are the sailors, and we would like to see if you would be willing to loan us an anchor. We think it would build great school pride." And thankfully, they said yes. And they gave the school the Tortuga anchor to keep for them, for all of us, actually, all the citizens of the United States of America. This is an artifact of the US Navy that we keep at Newport Harbor High School. And it's important, we have to fill out a form and agree to keep it carefully, and it's on loan to us. It's not ours. So, please, Mrs. Floor, don't try to take it home.
Well, you know, it's been there forever, and I had no idea that we actually
Well, since 1999.
That we approved.
Well, Brandon is the class of 2000, and he's the one that told me in 1999.
No idea.
Because I said, where did they get that anchor? You know? And Brandon was able to explain to me. It was a student, you know, it was a collective, you know, effort.
This is 2022. Okay, 2022. Bring it up again.
It's a four-year agreement.
And there's no charge to us.
There is no charge.
And we just have to, we have to take care of it, and we paint it?
We have to take care of it. There are terms in taking care of it, and we have to submit a report to
How we did it.
To the Navy every year, once a year, with pictures and the condition report, telling them that it's in good condition, so they can take a look and see that.
And they can't keep the government. But they know where the anchor is.
Well, I just thought, I just thought, this anchor.
Very cool.
Really cool.
Mrs. Anderson. Ms. Anderson?
I had a question also about 17A7. It says on here, the district issued a request for qualifications, for qualifications and proposals to three firms. And I believe on our last agenda, one of the contracts that we reviewed was for an outside company that reviews the bids. Did we go through them? Are they included in that process?
Yes, that's an excellent question. They're actually two completely different processes. So, the company that you're thinking about from the last agenda was a company called PQ Bids. And PQ Bids does pre-qualification of hard bid construction contracts. So, when we put out a bid for someone to, say, construct this building for X amount of dollars and complete it in a certain amount of time, and it's what we call a hard bid, they have to build it for that, no matter what it costs them. That type of bid is the type of bid that must be pre-qualified if we're going to get state money applied to it. Professional services, on the other hand, there is no such sort of pre-qualification. This particular firm doesn't do that type of work. They only qualify construction contractors that get hard bids. It's important to know, because a lot of people get confused about what a construction manager does. A construction manager is not the general contractor for the project. They don't build the project. What the construction manager is, is a person who manages the construction process, including the architect and the contractors, who, either one or more contractors who are hired. They also work with the inspector. They bring the whole team together and help our staff to administer all of the contracts, the construction contractors, the architects, the inspectors, and everyone else, to make sure that the project is completed successfully.
So, did we have a different company for the other HVAC projects?
We had a different construction manager for the other HVAC projects. And then, we will be bidding out the construction contract for this year's projects. And we had three or four different companies that won the lowest price contract bid for our air conditioning projects last summer.
Okay. And so, for this company, for Pinner Construction, what is your background with them?
Yes, they have submitted proposals to the district in the past to provide these types of services. They're a company that's worked here in Southern California for quite some time. I'm trying to recall, I've worked with lots and lots of people. I can't actually recall that I've personally worked with Pinner. But their references were checked, and they had good quality references, and the quality of the people that came to their interview, as I understand from staff, I did not sit in on the interview, was very, very good.
Who's a part of those interviews?
It's typically the Facilities Department. Arda Zaresny, who leads the Facilities Department, is part of that interview. And she will bring in some other folks, typically, at least the two members of her staff, Mark Manstof, who is our Facilities Analyst, and Steve Morris, who is our in-house TSA Inspector. She may have had other people involved in that interview. I don't recall exactly who.
So, you haven't worked with them before at any of your other districts?
I don't believe I have worked with Pinner before at any other districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Mrs. Floor moved, Mrs. Yelcy second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Seven, voted seven to oh. Thank you. I have to write that down. Okay. Discussion Action Calendar to appoint a Board Governance Task Force Team. And this is, back to you, Mr. Lee Sung and Mrs. Floor, it says.
I understand that there was a request from Board Member Floor to create a Governance Task Force. We have two new members to the board, and it's always a good opportunity to revisit policies and practices and how we govern. And so, I will open that up to discussion on nominations of who would be part of this task force.
The reason I requested it was a couple of things. One was that we had our, a study session with our board consultant from CSBA, and we talked about the new protocols. And we have done that in the past, although we did not do it with Ms. Matoye, but we figured that she was very familiar with the school district as a result, because she was actually one of our former employees. And then, we did do it with, when Mrs. Snell was appointed to the board. And we have a governance handbook that we have used, but it would be good to be updated. Michelle Bartow and myself, we tried to get together and start the process. I've done some research on other governor's handbooks, and so I think it's just a really good idea that we formally approve it, so that, you know, three people, three of us could work on it and bring it back to the board for some further discussion in a future study session. It was recommended also, it was an idea that was recommended by the board consultants. So, we just need that third person correct, don't you think?
I'm afraid to raise my hand. But you know how I like to be in on stuff. Would anyone else, this burning issue of, yeah, that would be me, then. I would like to be on that, since I was one of the people, when I did come in saying, now, what am I supposed to do as a board member? I, what is this involved? I'd love to have read it before I signed up. It's like, how much, how much time? How many days? Oh, okay. So, yes, I would like to do that.
And for how much money a month?
We're definitely not in it for the company.
We call that working for free?
Right. So, anyone else interested in being participating? Okay. The three nominees are Mrs. Floor, Mrs., well, we'll do them alphabetically, Mrs. Bartow, Mrs. Floor, and Mrs. Matoye. And Mrs. Anderson had a question?
Yeah, so, a task force is slightly different than I feel like some of our other teams. So, are we, what is the process going to look like for that? Is it?
Well, typically, a task force is a very short term, it's specific, and exactly. And we hope to, we'll bring something back within the next couple of months.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if we
Yeah, there'll be some discussion.
Is it every month, every quarter? What does that look like?
It'll be a short term, maybe a two-month process, where we would, we would work on compiling all the information that we received about what you all had requested that be in the task, in a governance handbook, some of the protocols, procedures, how we're going to operate. And then, we would bring it back and then probably work with President Matoye and
Dr. Navarro.
I'm pointing to you, with Dr. Navarro, to schedule another board consultant workshop.
How much time do you think it's going to take?
It's not how off task we get.
I mean, two months isn't cutting, is it five days a week for two months?
Oh, no, gosh.
Or is it one or two?
Then wait, let me take my name off.
I see the bullets sweating on the ground.
Maybe three meetings.
I think three.
Three meetings, because I've already
Because you can go home and do homework.
I've already done some homework already, and I sent some of the stuff already to
CSBA has, amazing.
Yeah, and that's what we're using.
Yeah. So, don't reinvent the wheel.
No, we have ours, and we're looking at, updating ours and putting some additional stuff in it.
I'm seeking a motion to approve Mrs. Bartow, Mrs. Floor, Mrs. Matoye to the Board Governance Task Force Team.
Actually, Mrs., President Matoye? You can actually point. You don't need to vote.
It actually is down here. Well, I think
But you can.
We're going to vote on it because
I just moved to approve. Mrs. Yelcy seconded it.
Thank you, I didn't hear her. Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for volunteering.
And I want to apologize to the public, because I was looking at my phone, because Mr. Dr. Haley at Costa Mesa High School let me know that girls soccer won CIF, won to nothing. And so, that means they go on to the third round of CIF, so I apologize. I was pretty excited about that. I told him to keep me posted.
Can we go back, who made the motion, in a second?
Mrs. Black moved, and Mrs. Yelcy seconded. Welcome. Community input on non-agenda items, Mrs. Black.
Just put it away. Okay. This is an opportunity for the public to address non-agenda topics within the subject, manner, jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual's speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comment per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. In compliance with board policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the video record.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Doughty.
Cool.
Good evening, President Matoye, members of the board, members of the cabinet, Mr. Lee Sung, members of the community. I'm Brett Doughty, I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. And I wanted to extend an invitation to all of you, the cabinet and board members. CFT is having their, this is their last annual convention. We're going to shift to a biannual convention from here forward. So, this also celebrates the 100th anniversary of CFT. And we will be in downtown Los Angeles, March 22nd through 24th. So, two years out, it's probably going to be in Northern California, a little further away. So, we wanted to extend that invitation, in case any of you want to attend. There's no cost for attendance, just let me know if you're interested, and we would be happy to have you be guests. There will be a celebratory gala that Saturday night, and if you're interested in staying a little bit for that, too, just let me know, we'll see what we can work out. So, hope you're able to make it. Thank you.
March 22nd through the 24th?
Yes.
Okay. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Matoye. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the district for its participation in the Estancia Zone meeting last week. I think the attendance may have been affected by the last-minute scheduling of the State of the Union address, but the effort is still appreciated. Ms. Matoye, you did an outstanding job running the meeting.
Thank you.
And I most appreciated that after, once all of the questions on the comment cards were answered, you reached out to us and said, "Are there any more questions?", which sparked a very good discussion, as I'm sure you recall. So, thank you for that. It was great. I'm sure that everyone in attendance left with the impression that the school principals are working very hard to make each site successful. I was very impressed with all of them. I have to tell you, though, the evening was marred by a comment that Mrs. Snell made regarding the attendance at Adams. She said that Mesa Verde parents do not send their kids to Adams because kids are being bused in from the West Side. It's not the first time that I've heard her say that. It's insulting, and it's wrong. I was one of those parents many years ago. If you want to improve attendance at Adams, it's pretty simple. You have to improve academic performance. Parents will flock to that school. To improve academic performance, you may want to ask the superintendent to develop a comprehensive, long-term strategic plan. If such a plan already exists, you may want to ask him to develop a new one. Putting the monkey on the backs of Mesa Verde parents is not a plan, it's an excuse. Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
I'd like to make a comment. I was talking about my personal experience as my children went to that school, and that's what I was talking about. I wasn't talking about currently, I was talking about my personal experience, which I have a right to do. Thank you. You've had your three minutes.
Mr. Smith, I'm going to
May I have one, make one statement? Ms. Matoye, just one sentence?
Really rather you didn't. Thank you.
It's not going to go anywhere.
Megan Ure? U R E.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Megan Ure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I pronounced your name wrong.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, I'm sorry, I pronounced your name wrong.
Oh, no worries, no worries. I haven't slept in a while, so forgive my performance here. I'm a mother of a special needs child, and I, people usually, one thing you learn as a special needs, as the parent of a special needs child, is that people tend to run away from you and the topic, and I'm praying and hoping that you guys don't run away. My son has neuromotor disorder called apraxia, which impacts his speech and also his balance. And at the end of last year's school year, I reached out to everybody I could. I reached out to Karen, and Sarah knows I've reached out to her, like, multiple times. And then, the school year started regarding my son's disability, because it's really not being properly serviced. So, I'm watching the time here. So, when school started, I noticed my son declining. And so, I continued to reach out to so many people, and the principal and the teacher told me that they were not, would not, and I have emails, anything I'm saying, I can show you evidence, so please ask, and I will give it to you. The teacher, the principal and the teacher refused to speak to me about my son's disability. So, since it's what, January, since November, I have not spoken, they will not speak to me about my son's disability. At the parent-teacher conference, I got really scared, because the apraxia, the actual balance part of the apraxia, was really showing, falling out of his chair, things like that. Let me go faster. I got nervous, and so I sent documents to the Special Education Department, saying, there's something going to happen to my son at school, there's going to be an accident. And on January 7th, there was an accident, and you're seeing here the result of the accident, he got a hematoma. And since then, before then, he hadn't had any serious injuries at school, but after, he had four, two being head injuries. And after the second head injury, I decided, this is recently, I decided that, my husband and I just talked it through, we decided we can't have him at school anymore, because we can't sleep at night. So, he began to fall again. And anyways, I took him out of school, we, I sat in the Special Education Department, and I, and for eight hours, and I didn't hear a response from the Special Education Department, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your information, Mrs. Ure. We all have your letter?
Yes. Will you please reach out to me? I can give you all the information you need, because three minutes just isn't long enough. Okay?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I can comment just briefly. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you for your comments and sharing the information with the board. I know that staff has been in communication with you, and their process is in place that we adhere to. we adhere to in regards to service for, for all children, including children with special needs. So thank you very much for your comments.
Oh, it's three minutes.
I know, but that's, that's not the issue, the office has not worked for me.
Well.
And I've reached out to some people, the project does not work for me, so I don't want to.
Sorry, I have you.
I appreciate that, but we need to move on and move forward because we have to adhere to our policies.
Do you think it was my reaching out to you that made you?
Thank you. Board member reports. Mrs. Flor.
Oh, okay, hold on. I'll pull this up. Couple of things. One is, I had the great opportunity of attending the Classified Leadership Academy on, last night, was it yesterday? Yesterday! How quick the day! Which is, that we offer both opportunities for both our classified and our certificated individuals to gain further skills in, in developing their leadership in hopes of, of improving in their, their position within the district. And it's always, it's great. There was a wide diversity of, of individuals, and we talked about governance. Whatever Jeff said made a big impression in terms of, in terms of the finance. I now understand a couple of things about, we now use the word "position control" in terms of financial, because some of the, some of the, a couple of the classified individuals were concerned about special education and how that relates to offering services when the federal government, who's supposed to give us 40%, is probably giving us single-digit dollars in terms of support for special ed, and that the rest of that money, and we're mandated by the federal government to provide the services, and then position control comes in because we're mandated to provide the services, but we're not reimbursed at the appropriate level, so that money comes out of our general fund. So they were very, they were very engaged in that, and then also then we talked about what the board does. They were very interested in knowing that, what we can and cannot do. So we talked, and it was, it was a great meeting, and I loved doing it, and so that was one. Second was, I had the opportunity to participate in the, a new meeting at the Back Bay PTA, our PTA president, and thank her for doing it. She is not a parent at that school. Our own Dennis Ashendorf is now the treasurer, and Priscilla is Strassman, Ms. Strassman?
Cynthia Strass.
Cynthia Strassman is doing it, and so she did an outstanding job, they've got a lot of plans going on. It was well-attended, lots of teachers were there, and so it's very exciting to see that. Couple of other things was, I'm hoping that, not tonight, but in the future, there was a big article in the paper, and I'm sure Dr. Baumeister really read it with relish, is about the CIF and the issue with private schools and Modern Day going through, and students transferring back and forth, going into Modern Day, staying there for a semester, winning a football national championship, you know, football CHI's championship, and then transferring out and going back to the school. And, and I, and I don't believe the public really knows what the process is within our own public schools, and how, how that process of transferring is really not something that we can do. So I was hoping that maybe in the future you can talk about that, because it's become, I saw Lee Gata today, and he is, yet last night, and he is actually working for Modern Day, and they have actually changed their policies, that they're now doing significant investigations about people, but they can't, they go in, they visit. So I'm hoping that you'll give us a, a brief primer on CIF, the CIF rules about recruiting, because that's one of the biggest complaints we've always had with private schools, is they're able to recruit Orange County-wide, and, and our school districts don't have that ability, so just, and it's in the public eye now, especially with these issues. And the third thing is, we're heading now, and we're now in February, and the board, under, under Vicky's leadership, we talked about school board member selection process, and looking at how to change that whole thing. I went to a CSBA confer, one of the CSBA conferences was about the, a new process. Well, if we're gonna do anything, or have any discussion about those concepts, we need to start now, because that's starting, that's gonna start happening. So I'm hoping that we can either agendize it, appoint another task force.
Oh, boy.
Do something, so that we can meet with the principals about how we're gonna go about doing this, because I know that it was something that was very near and dear to, to Mrs. Snell's during her presidency about offering these, our students some greater training, some.
Student board members.
Our student board members. You know, greater responsibilities than just standing up here and reporting all the activities and the great things that they do, but really getting them engaged, and so I'm hoping that can occur sometime. Oh, that's my report.
Cool, Mrs. Black.
Yes, I attended the CAC evening, and kudos to Sarah and her team, and I mean, it's just amazing, it was, they, they've been offering these different presentations from specialists, and we actually had some non-special ed parents there that had heard through the grapevine, and so they had it in the morning, and then again in an evening, and so it was a packed house, I would have to say. And, and the information, and for the life of me, I cannot remember the gentleman's name, but he's from, he was from Phoenix House, and he is a psychologist, not a psychiatrist. And so, but there was a great presentation, but I also encountered a heckler, and, but I think it's important to share that parent's concern, and part of what our presenter shared with us was that screen time is significant, can help, you know, cause significant, you know, brain growth deficit, you know, and, and matter of fact, when, I can't wait for him to tell his daughters they can't have a phone until they're 14.
Yeah.
And.
That's brave.
My seven-year-old grandson, oh, way, I don't know how they would do that, but he does not have a cellphone. But he is limited on screen time, and we've seen a dramatic difference in sleeping, behavior, doing better in school, significantly better, so there was a lot of that. And one of the dads was saying, "Well, it's part of the board's responsibility, you know, to set an example," and he believes that we shouldn't be sending home four through sixth grade Chromebooks home. And, and he was saying, you know, that's something that you ought to, you know, talk to, you know, your colleagues about and find out, you know, what was your, you know, what is the data? And we have the data now, so. So I told him I would, and that we would discuss it. So I'd be curious, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we have a lot on our plate already, but that might be a significant, they probably won't like it, but, but just in case, so. And then also, you know, I serve on Costa Mesa United Sports, and I will let, you know, Char talk a little bit about, you know, that as well. But one of the things that I was really interested in, have been, is Kaiser and Davis are under, we are negotiating joint use, and I know Dr. Baumeister has been giving us updates all the time, and I know the city's doing, but one of the things that comes up, because I live in the neighborhood of Kaiser, and one of the things that keeps coming up is, you know, well, what are you gonna do? There's gonna be lights, is there gonna be artificial turf, is it gonna be natural turf? And where are we with it? And so there's a little bit of confusion, and I think I got this right, so please correct me, Dr. Baumeister, if I'm wrong, but what staff had told me from the city was that they have the $2.6 million to do the concept, and, you know, to do the planning.
Design.
But they do not have the, the money to build it yet. And so once the school district and the city of Costa Mesa come to agreement on the joint use agreement regarding these two fields, and what are the terms and conditions and, and whatnot, and we, both entities vote on that, then it would be up to the city to then move forward, and there would be a, they would have, also do several other studies before they actually approve the plans, both through the city, and so we are probably a couple of years away from this. However, we don't know that, you know, we don't know. So, you know, but, but there is, you know, a lot of ignorance on this part, and so I think it would behoove the board, especially for us that live in that area, you know, I, Davis, I don't think is, is such an issue, but once the JUA comes out, because I know we're negotiating now, once we get that done, we'll have some criteria that will help guide us in that, in the future development of it. But when you start talking about lights and, you know, working into the night, and I tell you, our youth sports coaches and leadership were there from across Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, and, I mean, they have 3,000, 4,000 children that are looking for places to play and stay out of trouble and, and whatnot. So it really behooves us to participate in that. So I would really appreciate an ongoing update, just a email, just so that I have the facts straight, and so, but I wanted you all to note as well, so that, you know, to be, you know, before we start talking about where we're actually at, so.
Where are we?
Um, we were talking about that at the committee, this, this is my committee report then.
Yeah.
And the last I was told, it was in the city for final refinement, I haven't heard where it is now, as far as the Davis-Kaiser, but if you can want to wait till your report or just chime right in now is just fine.
You want me to do it now?
Sure.
We are waiting right now, actually, Mr. Holcomb is working with our lawyers, knowing that this will probably be the sample that we'll use moving forward for our JUA. So we're taking our time, going slow and doing it right, and making sure that we're doing it correctly. And so once we get done, then it goes back to the city, and then we'll have a back and, back and forth. But we've gone over this document, Tim's gone over it, and our lawyers have gone over it, to make sure that we're doing all those things correctly.
That's right, and I have confidence.
For six months, it's been going back and forth.
Yeah, I have confidence in, in how both, both Costa Mesa staff and, you know, Dr. Holcomb and your whole, are you a doctor? I can't remember. Mr. Hol. No reflection on you, by the way, you have, you're a seasoned professional, and we appreciate you. And, and also, so, but also, the, the other rumors was that they weren't gonna go to the community, and I said, "That's false." Because after all of that is done, then the city would have to then go through the CEQA process, like we did, you know, hopefully not like we did in Guerilla Del Mar, however, it is part of the process that we would have to go through, because of the, you know, the density and the neighbors and the area. So I just wanted to reassure, you know, the neighbors, is that we are, you know, we, I think we're, you know, going through a very methodical and caring way, because it is something we're desperate for in our neighborhoods, we're just desperate for that.
But my understanding was, I've just, it, it's the onus of communicating with the, the community, the neighborhood, is on the city of Costa Mesa, correct?
Correct, that's in that document.
So we've.
But it's our property.
Because I think we, we saw, we saw that doc, I think we saw that, we've seen that document, that it's really important to, for the city, the city to be reaching out to those, to the parents. But, and that's the same thing that's gonna be happening at Davis, correct?
Yes.
So when we go into the.
Although they don't think Davis is gonna have a CEQA.
So, they're, they're separate JUAs, both of them are, are.
There are some, there are some differences, because.
They're not JUAs, it's separate proposals.
They're separate projects.
Yeah, but they're joint use agreements, correct?
No, they're not.
There will be.
No, they're separate individual.
Aren't they called the joint use agreement?
No.
They're not the joint use.
I can jump in here.
Thank you.
They're, they're lease agreements that, that allow for us to use our property and for the city to use our property, so we are both jointly using it, but it's a lease agreement with the city. We have those already. A perfect example of that is Belerick Park.
Right.
We have a lease agreement, the city has a lease from us, we have use rights on the property still, but the city has a lease from us.
So, I guess the question that, the question I have is, as Dr. Baumeister said, that that is, we're patterning that to make sure that they're correct for the future JUA. So my question is, are we now looking at changing a JUA to lease agreements for the other schools, or are we staying with the JUA and we're just incorporating the information and, and the, the usage agreement based on this lease agreement?
It's a good question, and the best way to describe it is that we have agreements, not only with the city of Costa Mesa, but also with the city of Newport Beach, for how we share some of our facilities. And having consistency across all of those agreements is really important. And in fact, there's some language in some of the agreements that talk about trying to have some uniformity across those. So that's one of the things that we're looking at right now, and it really is about making sure that whatever it is that we do in one place is the same type of a thing that we do in another. It's a little bit different between the JUA where what we have, I now know here, this district commonly referred to as the Joint Use Agreement, is a master agreement for those places where we don't have a specific lease.
Right.
So it's similar to the leases in that it's also leasing.
It's an agreement.
But it, it's not as specific as these other leases that have, you know, very specific site, specific agreements, term of time, and specific areas mapped out, et cetera. The other ones are more general in nature to sports facilities at XYZ schools.
I know the committee would like us to, to at least begin the joint use agreement upgrading process. I know that we've asked for it, for, we've been saying, yes, we're going to, for the last three years that I've been on the committee. So sometime at another time, we can talk about that to get an idea, because we're never going to be finished with anything, so we can say, "Well, when we're done with it all, we'll then revisit this." That'll never happen, so it may be like our board policy, where we have to kind of do it and then come back and revisit.
One more, just.
You've got one more, okay.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
I forgot to remind the board, three minutes, but.
Oh, okay. Do we have three minutes?
Next week.
I didn't know we were on that.
No, no, next, next meeting.
She, she's decided to oppose that.
Oh, she did? Oh, okay.
No, we all talked about that in a meeting.
Let's go on.
Thank you.
Okay, so I may wait for Dr. Navarro, but there, I've been doing some, you know, kind of data collecting on my own regarding, regarding our technology, infrastructure, and, you know, that's coming into our district. And, and so I happened to run into our IT people and realized that this year alone, I mean, I know how many computers we have no longer needed, or not in use, or obsolete, or whatever, and so this year, the RIT department brought in, and I believe I have this right, of 37,000 computers over, lower, 3,700?
Thirty-four thousand, this year alone?
Yeah.
Six thousand devices.
Six thousand devices. So over the last couple of years, we've changed out with the Chromebooks. Anyway, the reason I brought this up, so I'm glad that you were here, because I would have sent it out to the Daily Pilot, that we just bought 37,000 more. But, but what I did, what I did realize, though, too, in looking.
You get a computer, you get a computer.
Since our last meeting in, our first meeting in August, that we have hundreds of applications. And so when talking with our peers in Tustin, she, you know, one of the board members there, and I won't throw her under the bus, but that's one of the reasons, they didn't see any other way to keep up with the technology, keep up with what's happening, and they had to pass them on. And that's the first thing that they did, was change the infrastructure in order to just support that, you know, and so I know Dr. Navarro has been, you know, they've been looking at it, talking about it, but, you know, if you, if you are drinking from a fire hose and trying to get these so our children this year can benefit, you know, from, you know, learning on, on their computers, I think it's important, so I really support the idea and would be willing to do whatever we have to do to help facilitate, before the end of the year, you know, to try and find a way to, so that we really understand, you know, what, what our IT department are, you know, is gonna need.
Sounds to me like Mr. Bucking's got a report coming to us.
No, no, but I think it's.
He's really excited back there.
No, no, but I think it's, I, I don't, you know, if we start buying and buying and we have our students moving ahead of our teachers and whatever, you're, you know, it's a waste of money. And you know me, I'm not going to go buy these expensive products and then have nobody be able to use them. I mean, there's so many, you know, facets involved. And so I'm not saying we're doing that, because we're going slow and growing and whatnot. But I don't think that we're going to reach a threshold where we're not going to be able to keep up. And that's just the bottom line. And that's a huge investment without going into it. And I know Dr. Navarro was saying he's concerned, Cabinet has talked about it, and I'm sure IT has talked about it. But I just, after talking to Tustin, you know, so I just want to go on record that I'm, you know, I'm going to start pushing this every meeting.
Oh, boy.
Well, you know, squeaky wheel.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Thank you. And I didn't know you were going to be here, and I wouldn't have thrown you under the bus like that.
It's cool. I have many friends that are under the bus with you. Mrs. Elsie.
Okay.
Sorry.
One of the, one of the groups that is very supportive of Challenge Success at CDM, and I think everybody's very supportive, but is the PTA. And about two weeks ago, they brought in a speaker from Challenge Success, Mary Hofstadt, who gave a presentation on the well-balanced student. And she used the results of the student survey that had been taken before the holidays and gave them kind of a briefing on what it was. And just a few major takeaways, which I found interesting. Our kids need more sleep. Sleep deprivation impacts many areas, including academic performance and mental health. She recommended considering removing cell phones from bedtime, cell phones from students' rooms at bedtime, which we often talk about when we're in SAR.
Build a safe.
Yeah, I was going to say, because they wake up and go find it.
We should take time to review our kids' activities and commitments. It might be too much. When you took, take a 24-hour pie chart, you know, and you look at how they spend their time, and they're more than 24 hours in that day. Kids need time for PDF. PDF is playtime, downtime, and family time. One thing I found interesting here, she said that families should spend at least 25 minutes a week, not a day, a week, doing something together. And that could be eating.
Eating and dinner.
Now, to me, that it's, it's remarkable, but evidently it's true that people find it difficult to spend at least 25 hours a week. Families spend 25 minutes a week to spend together. Anyway, I think that's. Research shows that chores and part-time jobs are good for kids, and they help build confidence and self-efficacy. And that was one thing, because I was, there was a lot of people. I mean, there were over 150 people in the LRC and around the people I was sitting with. That was their biggest takeaway, that they think their kids need more chores. So that was, that was interesting. And then, according to the data, kids at CDM are, quote, "doing school." They're not effectively engaged learners. So as, and that's basically, you know, they're, they're not looking at what their passions are. They're taking the right courses to get into the right schools. And so maybe the thing is, talk to your kids about what they're interested in. Let them take courses that they like, instead of what you think they need. So all that, I mean, the parent, it was very well received. Everybody came away with, yeah, you know, I have a lot to think about. So it's, it's definitely doing some good things.
Can you share that with us here?
Sure.
Yeah, because I, we haven't, I haven't received anything from Challenge Success. And I'm waiting patiently.
They don't. This is not, this was a PTA put on.
No, but I know. But wasn't she representative of Challenge Success?
Well, she's from Challenge Success, but I don't, I don't, you can.
That was really great. We'd like it.
Yeah, I think, I think this came out of Challenge Success. When they work with a school, which Corona Del Mar is this year, they provide resources, they provide ideas, and then the school team, the Challenge Success team, decides what they want to do. And I'm very pleased to hear this, because this sounds very much like the Challenge Success type of activities that they promote. And then the survey that they did earlier this year, which was a student survey, you know, I'm glad that those results were shared. And I think at some point, now that we're getting a little bit past the middle of the year, it would be a great idea to have Corona Del Mar and maybe the team come forward and talk about what they've done and their experiences and feedback, because I think we can all benefit from their experiences.
I would really love that.
But I think every meeting that I've been to that they have concerning this and with the PTA or whatever, there are more and more people at every event. And new people that have not, you know, come out to normal PTA meetings and things like that.
That's great.
So I think it's good.
My report is short. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting at OCC. And there, they have a machining department, and they expressed interest in becoming more involved with our technical education pathway. I understand the dean there is very open to seeing how he can work with Newport Harbor. So something to put on for future. They'd love to kind of work together to create a world where, you know, a high school student can go to OCC for a year or semester and come out certificated in a technical pathway. We're just in the talking stages about that. But I think it's great that everyone's open to that. And then additionally, I attended a meeting with the fire department and the staff, and I completed a.
Newport Beach or Costa Mesa?
Newport Beach, sorry. So I completed a, what they called their Newport Beach Distinguished Citizen Program, which was, for me, was kind of the fast track to drinking from the fire hose of all the different Newport Beach departments. It was great. I got to meet everyone and.
Oral Foundation.
Yeah, it was great. But wanted to, they invited me to come and look at their operations. And as I toured, I thought it would be great to, for the board to maybe take a tour. I mean, we couldn't all go together, but at different times, to look at their emergency facilities area and kind of bring that into our plan overall for emergency preparedness. It's pretty well-run and organized. So some ideas there. And that is it for me.
Ms. Anderson.
For my report, this last week, we had the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation event, which was wonderful. It was really great. I got to sit at the Pomona Elementary Table. And we had, it was one of the things that was really cool, is the Pomona kindergarten teacher got to meet for the first time, the Ray Elementary kindergarten teacher. They had heard of each other, and so they got to have a really nice chat. So that was just a wonderful event. And I also went to Whittier, had their dual immersion parent overview and program walkthrough. And it was amazing. We got to go to every single classroom. And it, one of the things that, for me, is exciting, there's 48 spots. There's two full kindergarten classrooms at Whittier. And so that is open for the next week or so, I believe. I believe it's February 28th is the deadline to apply. But I, their program is really fantastic. Scott Wilcox has done a great job of just assessing where his students and his, the population is at Whittier, and doing a 50-50 dual immersion model has been really successful. So I'd love to see more dual immersion in our district. And then Ray and Whittier, their PTA School Smarts Parent Program, this, this week, well, the next, this, the next week or two, is on school board. And so I was able to come and meet with some of the PTA parents at Ray and Whittier. And then one of the things, too, for this month is, is Black History Month. So I'm really, I've been able to be in a few classes and see bulletin boards and see a few teachers talking about that. I would love to see more from some of our school sites, talking about things that I didn't learn about until college. I think it's really important, especially at high school, that children are learning about redlining and all different things, not just slavery. And then lastly, we have a great honor on February 19th. Harley Ruda is holding his very first town hall at Estancia High School. And so that's Tuesday, February 19th, at 5:00 PM at Estancia.
Mrs. Snell.
Yes, I wanted to talk about the highlight of my month, which was the Mesa Verde Community Inc. hosted an information night for Mesa Verde parents to meet the principals from the schools, California Adams, Teewinkle, and Estancia. And.
And Hurley College.
And, yeah. I was getting, do it. And so they did, it was really nice for the principals to take time to come out. And they were very candid. They shared the stuff about their schools and what the pathways and the things they offer the students. And I think it was really important to, for the community to be there. Unfortunately, as the speaker said before, that was the night of President Trump's State of the Union. And it was really cold that night, too. So we didn't get as many as people in the community as we wanted to. But I was, I was very impressed, because we had a lot of older people in the audience. And it's important for everyone in the community to know what we're offering students, not just parents, and, because they can pass the word on. And so, and then several board members came. Ms. Anderson was there, and Ms. Flor, and of course, the emcee of the evening, the shy Ms. Matoye.
And Dana.
And, I'm sorry. Oh, Dana was there. You sat in the back. That's right. Okay. But it was good. And, and the president, Bob Juneman, was very happy and wanted us to do it again, maybe next year. So that, that was, that was good. I was sorry we didn't have it taped, but we couldn't really do that. And the previous speaker, there were people in the audience who asked the question, why can't Adams be a neighborhood school? Why do people from other areas come to Adams? And that was disturbing to me that they didn't realize that even though some of the people are on the West Side, Adams is their school, too. So we made that clear, that that's part of the boundaries, and it makes Adams a better school. So, and my, my sharing was, when I, my daughter was in, went to Adams, probably 2000, we had the same problems we have now with the community thinking that because we have a high Hispanic population that come in on a bus, that somehow the curriculum is dumbed down. So that was an opportunity to share about what really goes on at Adams. And it's unfortunate that some people have personal issues with me and use this forum to voice them. And I've just about had it.
That's it. Mrs. Black, did you have a comment?
Yes, I also, I didn't attend our teacher, you know, grant dinner, because I made a commitment to our D-LAC.
I was going to get a Q and A.
Parents, yeah.
Okay, I can cross that off.
So our D-LAC, we, we have probably between 40 and 50 families that show up religiously every single solitary month. And they're, you know, I will tell you that Vanessa's, you know, team and whatnot, they just do an amazing job of embracing. And they're very committed, you know, group of parents. So we had a presentation on reclassification. And so the parents had really great conversation about it. And also, we had Dell Ellis come from Nutrition Services, and then they did a presentation, and they made homemade salsa and chips. And, and so it was really, it was great, but very well-received. They talked about the benefits, you know, of student learning, and, you know, about what you eat and not eat and all that. So anyway, I just didn't want to forget to make my report.
Thank you. That's all right. I would have gotten to you, because that's after board reports.
Okay.
And I, too, was at the, my report consisted of the foundation, the co-award celebration, the foundation puts it on, but NMFT also celebrates all of the Teachers of the Year and makes the announcement of the district-wide winners of Teacher of the Year, of which I can't remember their names exactly. So if Mr. Doughty, Dr. Doughty would like to come up to the board and say something, I'd appreciate it, because I can only remember first names, and that's. Not good. Not good enough. Thank you so much.
Well, I'm certain that the HR department probably has this scheduled for a future meeting.
Okay.
So I don't want to steal any thunder.
Okay.
Okay.
But it was very exciting.
It was very exciting. So we sent out an announcement to all of us. Would you rather me just kind of wait until the, a future meeting? Okay. So the.
That was my bad. Sorry.
The district-wide Teachers of the Year that we are celebrating this year are Tamara Fairbanks, who's a music specialist at Mariners, Daniela Ramos, who's a kindergarten teacher at Davis Magnet, and Colleen Tolls, who's an English teacher at Ensign Intermediate. So they are amazing educators. This year, we are fortunate enough to have three teachers that we can recognize, largely because we have more certificated teachers in the district than we've had in the past. So we hope that we'll be able to continue having three persons to forward to the county competition. And I think all three educators are amazing, and they, I hope that one of them will become a finalist for Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you very much for augmenting that. And it is CIF season, and I'm saying this because Costa Mesa struggled, and we're really proud to say that we had five sports that went to, that won league, and we won a couple of bells, three bells, four bells. We won many bells in the battle of our bells. And we have a second-round CIF girls' basketball game on Thursday, I believe. But tonight, we had the CIF girls' soccer team. They won, so they move on. So I spent a lot of time in bleachers these last few weeks. And it was, it was exciting. And also, it is elementary musical season. So many elementary schools are doing their musicals now, so that they can use the theaters of their high school when the theaters get used up by the big people later on in the year. So it's, it's just a fun thing to go to. And I agree with you, the Arts Commission meeting is spectacular, because we have people from all of, Costa Mesa's the city of the arts. So we have all of the arts represented that are over at the Music Center and the Arts Center, as well as the city. And it's just.
The two cities.
Two cities. But we only had city reps from Costa Mesa this time, I believe.
No, this time.
So we need to get Newport Beach cities over there. Anyway, it was wonderful. And moving on, because we could go all night. I noticed that we had also committee reports. You've already cropped?
I have been cropped.
You didn't crop. Okay, you D-LAC, so you may crop. Mrs. Flor.
Okay. Couple of things. One is, tomorrow, we're having a special meeting of the board, as I mentioned at the last, at our last meeting. We are looking at a new funding model to come up with. Currently, because of the new LCFF and all of that, all the funding was, we lost all the funding, and so everything is through a pass-through. And it's based on 2007, 2008 enrollment. And so the interesting thing, especially in our district, is because the offices of Coastline ROP happen to be at Presidio, which is one of our sites. So all students who attend, regardless of where they go, and yes, the majority of them are our students, any course that's offered at the Presidio site is counted towards our ADA. So that causes some issues. Many of the school districts, especially, for example, Saddleback is losing tons of students a year. They are the highest-paying district. They pay $2.7 million. We're the third at 1.3. I sent this all information. And so we're having a really, a deep conversation. I know the superintendents have already met, and the CTEs of all the different districts, the five districts have met. And we're getting the presentation from School Services tomorrow with Debbie Fry, who will be talking about that, of re-establishing of how we're going to do it. The general consensus, my understanding is, from the steering committee, is to be looking at it as, based on, based on student enrollment. So that's kind of exciting. And then we'll have our regular scheduled board meeting in the future.
You're going to share that with us, because that'd be.
Yes, I will share that with you. I will share that with you. I do have, I, turn it off. I will, I want to interject something and compliment both, both Vicky Snell for interfacing with the Mesa Verde Homeowners Association, I think that's what it's called now, and establishing this. I know they tried to do it last year, and to really work and ensure that the, the voices of the principals there were heard and talked about their programs. And kudos to our principals. They were all outstanding. You almost want, you, you would like each principal in this district, I'd like a video blog, you know, so that, you know, that we can put this up. And so it's sort of like a video digest of, come to our school, you know, like a marketing tool. Come to our school, you know, if you don't want to come and visit.
Are you listening, Andrea?
Come to our school, listen, do some, you know, because they were outstanding.
They were.
Each, each one of them talked about, you know, about their special, the uniqueness of their schools and how they're meeting the needs of their students and their programs. Just phenomenal. And finally, I'd like to compliment President Matoye. Because she made an interesting comment because there were lots of comments, as Mrs. Snell alluded to. Why don't, the district needs to have a plan, a long-term plan on how to recruit kids, how to do this, how to do that. And, and the wonderful thing that Ms. Matoye said is it really boils down to parents. You know, it's parents' choice. It is parents' choice. And having parents talk to parents about how great that school is. It is a community school, but that, that community is, is a, is a large area. And they are all part of that community, regardless of whether they walk, ride their bike, or in some cases are driven by a bus or driven by their families. It is a school and those are the best promoters of a school. Again, you know, we can put up our test scores. We can show that the different segments of the community, the different subgroups are great, but it really is about that. And now being the longest-term serving board member, I can tell you that this, and probably Dr. Byermeister, it's been going on for how long? I've been on the board since 1991. And I can tell you in 1991 and 1992, this was the same issue. They ran out of principal when it was converted from, it was a kindergarten center.
Right.
And they complained about that because the, that principal was an outstanding principal. She happened to be Hispanic. And I'm, you know, I'm getting, I get annoyed because, let's just call it where it is. It, it is an issue. Ed Decker sat on this board when we, we made the decision to change the boundaries. And I'm, I'm giving a little history of this because it is, it's very telling. We had survey after survey. Parents from that Mesa Verde community gave us surveys. They said, you know, if you close and you change the boundaries, because there's no room for my kid to come to this school. There's, that's what they said. There's no room for my kid to come to this school. So we, the board at the time, the collective board, and Dana, where you were?
New.
It was with Dr.
I was on the other side.
You missed that, yeah.
It was with Mac, it was with Mac Byrne. He was the, he was the superintendent. He had come from, he had come from Atlanta, Georgia, I think.
San Marcos, most recently.
No, he was Atlanta. He came in, he was in San Marcos and went back there. Didn't make any difference.
He wasn't really relevant.
But so Ed Decker and the board wrestled with the issue and said, we will, we will change the boundaries. Because the actual reason was is because in order to open Adams School and convert it to an elementary school, we had to have students. And the only way we could have students was to expand the boundaries. Otherwise, it was going to be, it was, it was closed. That was the only way we could do it, was to bring students into that school. And so we did. So we, so we made the decision, the board collectively made the decision, based on over 500 petition signings, talking about it, that we would change the boundary. No sooner did we do that. And our superintendent warned us, don't do this. Do not do this. You are asking for it. Trust me, I know DSEG. Trust me, I've been in court with the Civil Rights. But no sooner did we do that than the OCR, the Office of Civil Rights, came down on us. No sooner. We don't know, we, we, we think we know who made the complaint and was a teacher in our district, but we don't know for sure. And at that point in time, the OCR came in. We had multiple, multiple conversations. And there was a settlement agreement made. And it basically said, no, those kids cannot be returned back to Wilson School. Even though, ladies and gentlemen, those kids can walk across the street. It's the, it's called the Joen rectangle. It is between Wilson and Placentia, right there. That Darryl, not the Darryl that you live, you live across Placentia. It's that rectangle right there.
But do they have the option? I thought they had the option.
School choice.
They have the, they do have the choice. They have the option of going. But we, as a district, are prevented from changing the boundaries forever. And it's not.
Well, made Adams a better place. It's a great school.
Absolutely. But please be reminded that we cannot change that boundary. OCR says that if we want to even change the boundaries anywhere else, we have to move.
All boundaries.
So it's all boundaries. It's like we have to go east, we have to go like eastward.
All I can think of is what we.
So California has to go to Paularino. Paularino has to go to, you know, it's like.
Think back to what we did when we made our trustee zones.
And, and the board, and the board at the time, I will tell you, really wrestled with us because we felt very strongly that, yes, that the neighbor's school, the kids should go to, walk across the street, have a little crossing garden.
That would actually make me very mad if I lived across the street from a school and I had to get on a bus, yeah.
Exactly. They have to go on a bus. So, and that happened back in 1994, 95, whatever. Am I telling you that we've had an OCR complaint leveled at Newport Harbor High School because of our math program and denying Hispanic students or Hispanic surnames into our higher level math? So, you know, we've developed all these plans. The Modern Scholars Program was not necessarily our idea. It came from the parents, parents and community leaders at Adams School who said, if you have a Modern Scholars Program or you have a program specifically geared for high achieving students, we'll come, we'll get all these kids. And let me tell you, we established it. But when we said that that program would be available to the entire Adams Community School, the Adams attendance boundaries. Nobody else could come. Those parents didn't attend. They didn't come. They didn't enroll their students. They chose not to because Hispanic students were in there. I'm going to get upset, but let's call it where it is. We can develop everything that we want. We can't combat, you know, we cannot combat bigotry and racism.
You know, Mrs. Flor, before we go down that.
But let me, you know, but again, we have to respect parents' rights.
Right.
You know, we can't force parents to, parents to go to a school.
Sure.
We can encourage, we can do what Mrs. Snell has done. We can all do that within our, within our schools. They have the right. They can apply to go somewhere else. We have open borders. We have our, our high schools that can do that. We have many schools that, that go. I, I exercised choice when I sent my kids, instead of to Newport Harbor, I sent my kids to Estancia High School. I've sent my kids to, you know, Sonora Elementary, Davis.
You've been everywhere.
I've sent them everywhere.
That's it. Pick a school.
Pick a school. We've been there. But again, you know, coming up with a, coming up with a plan, you know, it's, it's, it's a whole community effort and our parents need to take, take some leadership of this.
Right. And we have a plan.
Thank you. I thank my high horse. Okay, so box off? So box off. Okay, good. Informal reports.
Can I?
Whoops.
Uh-oh.
Oh, you put a light on, I'm sorry.
Why didn't?
Committee reports.
Yes, she has a committee report.
I'm so sorry. The Costa Mesa Chamber Education Committee met without Ms. Anderson and myself because we were at the Orange County Department of Ed, Newport Beach City Youth Council. We were at a board meeting, but what do we have?
Mental Health Task Force, which is.
Oh, Mental Health Task Force, Mrs. Snyder, needs to be added to our.
Which Mrs. Anderson and I are both on and attended.
Good. Thank you, Mrs.
January 29th. Anyway, it's under the auspices of Dr. DiAgostino's office with Angela Castellanos is also very involved. And it's, it was a great meeting. They first gave an update on the suicide prevention signage, which we all know about, we heard about. And then Dr. DiAgostino told us about Title IV monies that we have coming to us, which will beat us about $200,000 and it is for school climate. And so he was asking the committee for recommendations and I, for the next meeting. And I think we all have recommendations. I know I do. So I will be talking to him. And then that day, they had representatives from Stop Short of Addiction, the Hoag Center for Healthy Living, which I don't know if anybody's seen that or been there. It's across the street from Hoag Hospital. I haven't been in it, but they presented. And literally, they have so much going on over there for families, students, everybody. I mean, you can take Zumba classing, classes and all kinds of things. But I think we offer so much in our community, which was great. And they also had the Aspire Program speak. That, I know Dr. DiAgostino has done this in the past, but maybe sometime future this year, he could again talk about all the services that are available outside of our schools to help with mental health because there's a lot going on. So.
Excellent.
Just on the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Jelsoft. We didn't have it on our list.
There's a lot of mental health, just on the board.
Just on the board. There is that. Thank you. It'll be on the list next time.
It's, it's only four times a year.
Yeah. But it'll be there and I'll know because the date will be on there, but we'll add it to the list.
Okay.
Your turn.
I've shared my items, so I will defer to the rest of Cabinet.
Just a couple of very, very quick things. I do want to congratulate all of our teachers, but I also wanted to thank Mrs. Flor for coming by the Classified Leadership Institute. And it was a nice addition. It was nice to follow up from Jeff's presentation. It linked very, very nicely. So thank you for your time to do that. It was very, very well received. And I would invite anyone to, any of the board members to visit us. Our next one is actually March 18th. And the topic is embracing conflict and motivating others.
Ooh, I think you ought to go.
Our presenters are our very own John Drake, Kathleen Leary and Dale Ellis.
Would you send us an invitation?
I would love to. I would be happy to.
You're making the presentation?
With Kathleen Leary and Dale Ellis.
Oh, great.
Great. So we hope that you have the opportunity at some time during the year to join us for a session. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more from me tonight. Thank you.
No report, thanks. No report. Just wanted to give you a heads up that Thursday morning at 6:30, we will be starting our Spring Principal Directors Book Study. And every two weeks, we will have 13 hearty souls getting up at 6:30 in the morning and going over Leading with Emotional Courage, How to Have Hard Conversations, Create Accountability, and Inspire Action on Your Most Important Work. That's the book we'll be going over.
Have a great time. Who's author?
Peter Bregman.
Oh, okay.
No report.
No report.
And by the way, Linda Darling-Hammond has been appointed to the, she is now the head of the Board of Education, State Board of Education, which is a great, great addition.
Excellent.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Black. Second. The second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Drive safe, everyone. And don't get sick.